A reminder to people Zoom here that if you don't mute yourself, then we can all hear you. So we're gonna get this meeting going. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the ARPA Commission, the American Rescue Plan Act Commission. It is July 11, 2022. It's 6:30 PM. And again, this is a special meeting. We have a couple of things that we're gonna take care of, but mostly it's a public hearing for everyone a chance to hear some details about some of the projects that have been requested for funding for ARPA and a chance for our people to ask questions and give us some feedback about about these items. And we're just gonna go in the order that they are. We're gonna ask everyone to have some patience because we do have quite a few things. If we get past nine o'clock today, we convene on Thursday night. Maybe we won't need to do that, hopefully, but just in case. And yeah, this commission won't be taking any action until we've heard all of the projects tonight that are on the list. And I'm guessing everyone has seen the agenda at least or can look at it if you have a downline. Okay, so the first order of business is roll call. And I already kind of looked around the room and everyone's here except for Samantha Hills and Mike Tomato, who is on, he's on Zoom. Tom Smith is also on Zoom. Hi, Tom. So we definitely have a core. We have almost everyone here. And the first item is just a new business. We had received a request from the library. It's ARPA 39, repair the library building structure for $27,600. And we agreed to keep it on the agenda for this week. So just need someone to make a motion to formally receive it. Okay, anyone want a second? Yeah. Okay, so on favor of receiving the submission, stay on. I pose. Anyone abstained? All right, so it's officially received. And now we just move on to the formality of it being heard. So I do see Devlin Neer on my, and I see Karen Anne. So do you want to just quickly go through what the request is? And we...
Can everybody hear me? Okay. The building, the library building is 15 years old, and it's starting to show signs of wear. So the request that I had put in for $27,600 included fixing some of the HVAC units on the roof, replacing the framing on the door that goes out the back from the basement, cleaning caulking, resealing some of the brickwork, redoing some of the exterior. The foundation is not the problem. The covering over the foundation has come off in a few places. That needs to be replaced before the foundation does get rotted. I don't know what else to say, before it gets wet. And then we have the issue of the fact that if you're in the director's office, there is only one exit, and that is out toward the front desk. And Osha says we're supposed to have two methods of egress. So we put in a request to, in the closet off of there where the access to the roof is, to put a door in there that would take you out to the stacks. The total of that comes to $27,600. Unfortunately, I just got a whole pile of other ones on Saturday. And Christina, I tried to email you at the .gov address. And apparently, all I did was take the .org and replace it with .gov, but apparently it's actually changed a little bit. So I sent it to your Yahoo account, so I don't have any idea if you have any of this. But when we had, when you had the last meeting and I was there, you said you weren't taking anything new after that meeting.
Right. They're brown hold, but...
Okay, so there is, there is a meeting on the 18th, right? You're not accepting anything new on the 18th?
Probably not. Not until we, not until we figure out what we're doing with this whole list of things and we see how much money we have left and if we can accept anymore.
Okay, because we did have a few more things that, that were looked at that we didn't get the proposals in. It is primarily two things. It is primarily the fact that the building's getting old and that we need some more security measures. And I realize that the biggest thing the town always says about the library is you've got a huge amount of money already. But what most people do not understand is that the majority of the money that is in the bank for the library is earmarked for very specific projects already. And it is not just extra money that we can do things with that we want to do if we have $25,000 worth of things that need to be fixed. So that's why we're asking ARPA to consider at least part of what we need to get done and see if we can get some of these things fixed. For example, the foundation before it does get wet and, and start to have a concern.
Does anyone on the commission have a question?
Do you have quotations for the projects you present tonight?
Yes, did I not send them? I thought I sent them to you when I sent the actual form. I should have attached all of them.
It's on, it's on the, yeah, on the website. Yep. Well, thank you.
Okay, Deb just unmuted herself. I don't know if that's because she wanted to add something.
I'm, I'm trying to find that little hand. So I've been reaching for help with somebody and I can't seem to find it. Thanks, I would like to just share a few things. When we realized not that long ago that we could and should take part in getting money, applying for money from the ARPA grant, it didn't leave us unfortunately much time to get quotes and figure out what things needed to be done and who would be able to, like I say, give us pricing on it. When, when our original application went under, went in, it literally went under the wire just in time and...
Actually, it wasn't in time. I was two hours late.
Well, when, when we had discussed it, I know that was because of having to get into the town with the town clerk, but to remember Christina saying that there was a little bit more time that normally it would close out. So and that all being said, my concern is we did get, we were waiting to get more quotes for more work to be done at the library. Unfortunately, it didn't come in, in time, so we did apply for at least what we did have. And I know it's true that you said that you weren't going to be accepted anymore. You just said again that you have to see how this all works out with what you're going to be doing tonight. I guess I would like to know, are we gonna have a chance to put in or let you guys know just what else it was that is needing to be done that we would like help with? Only because we would rather have ARPA pay for it than having it come out of the taxpayers' money and whatever. But I just, I guess, can you, can you say at least is, do we even have a chance or did we lose that chance altogether or?
I'd say there, there's a chance, but I can't tell you. And that's, we have to go through our process, and that's what we're here to do is go through our process. We don't, I don't know what everyone else is thinking, and I don't even know what we're gonna be hearing tonight. So I don't know how I'm personally gonna be voting on things, and I don't, I couldn't predict how everybody else is either. So that's, that's what we're here, here to do. And so I can't really give you a better answer than that. Sorry, Debbie.
No problem. So but tonight is, you will actually, no, you're not gonna vote and approve things. That's something you'll do later. You're just hearing the town right now from the people.
Right, there is a chance we could vote on some things later if we have time, but we have to get through all of the things, so.
Okay, well, Christina, I want to thank you for putting us on the agenda for tonight, but we have a library board meeting in 15 minutes, so we both have to go. But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you both. Thank you. So we can move on now to our official public hearing. The first item on the public hearing is ARPA 1718. It's the walking track improvements at River Road Athletic Complex, which includes drainage and lights, and the request is for $196,979. And I believe, I see, I don't know.
Carl's here as well.
Okay, so Joe Colangelo and Carl are here to talk about it.
Can I just make one statement before you start? So someone who's on the call just mentioned, if you get, if you're in the room, if you could just talk a little bit louder so that it gets picked up on the microphone so that those online can hear you and they're recording as well. There you go.
So I'm Joe Colangelo. I am the chair of the RECT Commission. I live at 24 Jared Sparks with 34-year residence. The RECT Commission, RECT Commission before us, but there was a little lag in time. John Patton, who was a five-year, five-term selectman recreated us. Eddie Taman, myself, Mike Panadia have been in this for a long time, 20 years. It's a seven-member commission, and we, our job is to kind of help create some of the projects and then oversee them. And presently, Alan Humphrey is our RECT director. He's the paid guy, and he's doing a really good job, I think. So what we're talking about is the, mostly the River Road Athletic Complex, which I think is the best thing that we came up with as a commission and as a town. I mean, it's a great meeting place for people in town. The facility is great. There's a walking path that wraps it, a lot of use on that walking path. Little League field, soccer field, a pavilion, basketball court, soccer, if I didn't say it, there's a playscape. There's a lot going on there. And we do summer concert series there. Volleyball, volleyball. And besides the summer concert series, we do, it's just like, it's a great place to do meetings. Oh, Wellington Day. We did, we were supposed to do Wellington Day this year, but we got made out. So great facility, right? Used by a lot of the townspeople, I would imagine, everybody. And we've, you know, that park was, before it was a park, was a dumping ground for asphalt debris off the highway. And somehow, it's this beautiful park we have today. So I think it builds a sense of community. It's a great place for people to hang out. We have lights there now that I believe, you know, mostly came from CIP money, but we've lit the parking lot and we lit the facilities across the front so people can still walk till 10 o'clock at night, but the back of the walking path is dark. And some people have said it'd be great if the whole thing was lit. And it would be great because that would also give a little bit of light to the park. Soccer could go a little longer. Kids could kind of play fungo and baseball a little bit longer. We could do things longer and later in the park. And during COVID, that park was a big help because we were outdoors. So we're asking for that money to line the back of the walking path with lights. So until 10 o'clock at night, people could walk the entire walking path. So folks come and walk, their kids play the playscape, shoot hoops. If you drive by at night, you see kids out there till the lights go off playing basketball. So I know the ARPA money is, it's, it's tax dollars that we're paying in the long run. We all know that. But it's beautiful that it's kind of being spread around this way, and we're getting the option of how to use it. To me, the park is probably one of the best reasons that ARPA created this funding because everybody in town gets to use it. I know everybody, you know, schools, public works, this building, everything that's being ARPA money donated touches all of us, but the park is physical. We go there, we appreciate it, we see the changes. It's good for everybody. And I think it builds community. And if we can get lights across the back, it also creates some safety. So some people have complained that it's dark at the back at night, and it'd be great if we had that. And it would expose us to less liability. That's what we're looking for. We're also talking about putting a 100-amp panel at the back of the park. So Wellington Day and during other kind of projects like that, we can have power in the front of the park, power in the back of the park. We don't have to have extension cords running all over the place that people are tripping on. That's dangerous. So to me, that park is one of the best things in town. It's beautiful, it's useful, people use it, and it's great. Just to keep it maintained and make it a little bit better. I know Alan's down there all the time cleaning up. We have the town office building field back here, hall school, you know, center school, there's fields, but River Road needs the most attention. This would help us make that park a little bit better. We have some drainage problems that I think Carl's gonna talk about, which is the bulk of this request. So I'm just gonna say, community and safety are two things that this ARPA money really helps us with, and that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
So I'd like to address the drainage issues, particularly at the south end of the park. And that is an area that has a lot of public. The track itself gets wet, it gets icy during the wintertime, and people walk it even when there's ice. So the intent of this work is to alleviate the flooding and to put everything that's critical above the drainage itself. And that will include some piping underneath the existing walkway that's there now. And also, we, we will repair a couple of spots at the northwest end and near the west end where the electric boxes right now are exposed and cover's broken. So that's all included in this, in this work. And again, it's, a lot of it is for safety reasons and for use of the park because there are times when the public is so, so why that the area, the grass area walkway and rest of the fields is diminished in size.
Sorry, we're trying to make it easier for folks to hear you.
Okay. I'm not sure what else I can add to that, but I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Carl, one of the, one of the things that we, we had started with two requests, one for drainage, one for lights, and sort of realized that they were connected because if you're digging up to do the drainage, you still, you're gonna dig up for the lights too. Is it, are they connected still or?
They're connected in the sense that if you do the work at one time, you have a lot of savings because you have a contractor on site that the mobilization, demobilization of, you know, equipment and forces. It takes time and it takes some extra money. And in this particular case, if it's all done at the same time, then it's beneficial to save them.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions? All right, so this is a chance for the public to ask questions of our RECT Commission representatives or comments about the project. Elaine Nook, 28, Fermi Road. It sounds like worthy work. And what question is there? Has there been an estimate of a change in the ongoing cost for more light, more electricity, whatever?
Yep, so essentially, we think it's probably a power increase, double it, because we're doubling the amount of lights. It is not a huge number because the lights are all LED modern lights. So our monthly right now is, we write 900 per year. So you're at $80 a month, give or take.
So if that would, I mean, that would need to be built into budget.
Correct.
Like yellow and white.
Yeah, sure. Well, where is it?
It's Don Berg, Red Oak Hill Road. Are the LED lights 3,000 degree Kelvin? I think we got them as 41 moments, but they are adjustable. Because they, well, check that out because I, I understand this planning zone doesn't allow 40, 4,000 degree Kelvin or anything greater than a 3,000 degree Kelvin light on town property. Not 100% sure how that's all worked.
Is that the truth, kids? So modern LED lights come with adjustments, so they can be 3,000 warm white, 4,100 daylight, or 5,000, which is that crystal blue light. So I think they're probably set at warm white if that's the rule. If they're not, we can set them at warm white.
Yeah, I think it's a night sky provision. I can't remember what agency it's.
They are cut-off downlights. Yes, absolutely.
There are two hands up online that I see. Yeah, so Danica, do you want to ask a question?
Yes, I think that it would be wonderful to have the lights. My concern is if the new warehouse goes in just the other side of 84, that the park is gonna be so loud and uncomfortable that it's not a wise use to spend the money there.
I don't understand that question.
Well, the question is, if the warehouse, the proposed warehouse, the $1.5 million square foot warehouse goes in just the other side of 84 from the park. When I was at the park the other week, midday, with the traffic, there was a fair amount of noise. It was not ridiculous, it wasn't untenable, but that was now. If we end up having a large amount of traffic going in and out just the other side of 84 with all those tractor trailers and the additional car traffic, my concern is that the environment at the park is no longer going to be pleasant enough that people are going to be willing to be there. So my concern is, even though it would be wonderful to have the additional lighted path, if people, if the usage goes down significantly, it might not be worth the money.
Anything comment?
Yes.
So I think between the highway loops, so it is on the south side of the park, it comes around on the other side where FedEx is, a lot of highway traffic, a lot of noise there. There's presently two, one truck stop about to be two, FedEx is there. I really don't think that it's gonna be that much noise pollution, added to the fact that people would say, I'm not going to the park, it's too mad to play basketball or baseball. That's my personal opinion.
Fair enough.
Are you done, Donna?
I, I think so. I was trying to lower my hand. Sorry.
Okay, okay. Matt Clark, Matt has his hand up online.
Yes, thank you. I haven't participated in any of the discussions about this topic yet. This is the first time. So I have no idea how much the request is for, how much is the request for?
This one is $196,979.
And that would be lights, drainage, and 110-amp panel, right?
I couldn't hear what you said at the end. It's for lights and drainage.
And, and added electric.
Yeah, including this, this electrical panel. Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification. You know, I, I share Donna's concern, unfortunately. I, you know, if that warehouse goes in at a million five square feet with literally hundreds of spaces for trucks, and it's not that far, I mean, so I realize it's on the other side of the highway, but that's a long, that's a, that's a lot of trucks and they're very loud. So I wouldn't say I am opposed to this, but so thanks for the clarification. I appreciate it. Thank you.
This sounds more like a comment on the facility than it does on the park. And I don't think we abandon a park just because we get a little more commerce in town and a little more noise that I really don't think is gonna be that much noise.
It's also, it's also not a percentage. It has a percent. Yeah. I think I saw it here. Yep, yep.
Elaine Nook, 28, Fermi Road. I understand Donna's concern. Actually, I was right there today. Any of the traffic, traffic of tractor trailers coming from the east are gonna be getting off that exit ramp that's right across from, directly across from commuter lot and very, very near the park. So I think, I think there is concern more for that than for these issues, but I see an impact that might be very undesirable on the facilities at the park with the, like, traffic when they have, you know, kids are old, when games are scheduled, you know, you've got high-use tanks particularly, and the volume, the, the number of tractor trailers that are being looted to us is unbelievable. So I think there is some consideration that needs to be watched regarding the whole, the whole situation.
Don.
Don Berg. I just want to add that I, we all know that these numbers here are real dollars and they exceed the amount of money that's available. So something's gonna have to get somewhere along the line. I want to say that I agree with, if you're gonna put drainage in, you put in conduits for electric at this point in time, whether at some point that'd be electric. Heart, the wiring needs to happen at a later date, so be it. That's what I mentioned, the commission will try to figure out. The other thing I would say that was not mentioned with regards to noise and was just brought up with the exit that a lot of trucks would use, is that probably their brake brakes would be noisy, and that would be an added noise that is there now.
I see Sarah Reese has her hand up online.
Hi, are we giving addresses for the record in this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Sarah Reese, 15 Pine Crest Road. I love the idea of putting money into our park. I think it's a great amenity to have. I'm just wondering if it would be more beneficial to possibly upgrade the playground equipment and make it a little bit more kid-friendly? I know we go out of town a lot to use different playgrounds that are more kid-friendly than the one we currently have. Just a thought and a suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we can't think of other things other than what's been asked of us. So that's really where, basically what, what they presented to us and what we are considering and reacting to.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Steph Summers has her hand up online, her actual hand.
Thank you, Steph Summers, 4 Y Road. I just wanted to point out about the, the issue of the lights at the park. First of all, I feel like it's the heart of what ARPA is supposed to be about, which is recovery of our community for as many people as we can reach. And I think sort of the, as usual, the kind of, the, the underrepresented component of town is really kids. And I think that the park is a jewel. It's already, we've already been, we've already been investing in it because I think there's pretty wide agreement that it is a jewel. And the warehouse is, to my knowledge, a proposal. It's not a done deal. So I really feel like, if anything, one of the issues about the warehouse may need to be sound and the incursion on the park as much as anything. It's more, that's an issue for that debate, I think, rather than presume that the warehouse is gonna sail through and, because it hasn't really even been discussed that much yet. So that, those are my two concerns. I just think, you know, I think the park is something that, I really love the idea that there's an enhancement. I think drainage is one of those things, like replacing a roof that isn't all that sexy, but boy, is it necessary and especially for, you know, everyone who's using the park through all the four seasons. So I just want to be pro-park. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mike Mafu.
Mike Mafu, Clover Springs Drive. I think when we first started hearing about ARPA money, one of the big things that was great for our community and other communities is that at least some of the initial intent was it helps people directly in need, it helps businesses in need, it helps the community in, in essentially in the crisis or recovering from the crisis. And a lot of things, as we've heard, talked about with RECT a lot, are things that get you outdoors. The facilities are a place that you could still go when you couldn't go much of anywhere else. So certainly, it's a public health benefit, it's a quality of life thing. So I think, to me, this feels like this is kind of at the heart of what the ARPA money was kind of intended for. Help individuals in need, help the businesses in need, help the community improve quality of life, more sustainable things if we have another outbreak of a pandemic. If we have another outbreak, the pandemic, or another variant gets that, we're going to be using the park even more. So I, I think this is, to me, this is going towards the theme.
Anyone else? I don't see anyone online. I think we'll, we'll close the hearing on that one and we'll move on. The next one, and thank you. Joe, thank you. ARPA 20, the new furnace for the firehouse of Arlington Fire Department for $20,000. Oh, I see you, Tom.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm really the fire, fire chief. Our request is to replace the furnace that is just about 50 years old. We do have two quotes. The price, like you said, is $20,000. We have two quotes that's, one is about $16,000. And it's going to entail four, so five, curse, more expenses, pretty closer to $20,000, which is a natural gas conversion. They use some tanks that we have that are currently there for other things. We're going to have to change tanks and upgrade things like that. The second quote is for a new furnace that would go right at the spot that it's there, that's currently exists. The old furnace, they would take the old one out, put the new one in, and use all the existing ductwork and electricity and things like that, fuel tank and stuff that exists already. Again, like I said, it's a 50-year-old furnace. And we've been told right after CIP requests that if we're having problems that will not be able to be fixed in the near future, the parts are not available. People won't work on it because of liability reasons. They won't work on the furnace. So at the time it was offered that, it fits in this criteria under the Aprilian Emergency Services. It keeps our trucks warm, it keeps our medical supplies, things like that. So if it does go out, we have issues. We have to go for some space here or something like that. That's kind of it. The duck shells, that's kind of the version. And then the other ones certainly is impacted by warehouse. But that's our request.
Okay, thanks. Does anyone on the commission have any questions? Okay, so I see, already see a hand up. You guys don't see it, but Matt Clark has his hand up.
Yeah, I, I was just curious. You know, as an outsider, I'm not quite sure. But how much money has been spent on fire services? How much ARPA money has been spent on fire services so far?
So there, so far, there has been $100,000 for the second ambulance. There was, yeah, $137 for air packs. $235 for the radios. So the two months. Almost yeah, about almost $100,000.
That's, that's about a quarter of our, I don't know, I'm not quite sure. So, okay, well, thank you for the tally. I appreciate it.
The one, the one thing I can say is most of these items were things that were on our CIP request list. So it's things that are not going to be having to use taxpayer dollars on in the coming years, the next few years. So, and this is one of those items that sounds like will be on the CIP list if it's not funded here. Yeah. So. Okay. Elaine.
Twenty eight Furby Road. I have a question. It sounds like there's two different kinds of furnaces.
Yeah, we got two.
And, and it would either be fuel, oil that's present or natural gas.
Correct.
And then new, new numbers on ongoing savings with future fuel purchase purchases.
Yeah, they come up to be about the same. Yeah, the oil furnace that we have now, estimated use we'll have at first, they use propane at this point. But yes.
Oh, I think. Oh. Oh, okay, you mentioned natural gas. Okay, so then there's, there's no real big difference in the ongoing fuel costs.
Any other questions, Chief Snyder?
Don Berg, Red Oak Hill. I believe that propane would be a cleaner burning fuel from a carbon perspective, that fuel. So that should, should be a consideration.
So, well, I'm, I'm not sure how they all considered it, what they all thought about and did when they came up with this proposal. But the proposal that they've given to us is all we can react to and.
Well, yeah, I guess he, he had mentioned that there was a choice of two or something.
Yeah, there's a choice of more, more propane, which we. And the estimated cost is about the same. As far as the carbon footprint, we really didn't get an answer to that. To the other, yeah, I don't have the answer to it.
Okay.
Whether it's going to be a huge difference in the carbon footprint or not.
Yeah, my only hope is it should be a consideration.
Any other? Any other questions, comments? Anyone online? I don't see any hands up virtually. All right, so thank you, Chief Snyder. We're going to move on now to ARPA 28, which is technology upgrades at the senior center for $2,441.07. And Edgada is here to talk about that one.
I'm at the God of 23 Meruro. Basically what this is, is this is to upgrade the existing equipment that's in the senior center. So because we're starting to get more usage from the seniors, the computers are, are fine as far as power and speed. But the problem is we're finding that the new software that's coming out that we put on them is slowing them down. So what we need is to operate them rather than replace them. Also, we're looking at upgrading the wifi that's in the building because what's happening is more of the seniors that are coming into the senior center now are, have smartphones and they want to attach them to wifi. And it's really slowing things down on the wifi end of it. So we thought if we went with a mesh system across the whole thing to speed it up, it would solve that problem. The other thing is the printers that we currently have in there are getting to the end of life. Some of them are like five and six years old. And we're starting to have a little problems with them. They jam a little, things like that. And they basically reached the end of life, so it's time to upgrade them. So we put in there a little more powerful printer that has a lifecycle as far as its toner, where we would be able to put one toner cartridge in and it would probably last a year with just a one-toner cartridge and then with everybody using it.
I said I need that kind of printer.
Yeah. The, the seniors are starting to use it more. And we're finding out, we, I did, I have been doing some work in there. But the thing is, I have to be in there running software programs on these computers on a regular basis just to keep them so they're usable. By adding the memory and upgrading them, it'll solve that problem where I don't have to complete, be in there wiping up or cleaning out these programs all the time.
I'd like to add to that, that's okay. Um, I just wanted to say that COVID has changed the way that we do business. A lot of things are exclusively online. And to increase the seniors' accessibility to these services would be really beneficial.
Yeah, one of, one of the other things we were going to do is we were going to set up video conferencing there so that we have three machines in there that they could use for video conferencing, which they could use for taking online courses if they wanted to. Or if we had a pandemic and they wanted to communicate with a family member on the other side of the country, they'd be able to do it. It's kind of tough to do it on a phone per se, especially you got to remember, a lot of these seniors that we have are not computer savvy. So technology is one of the things that they always have a problem with. So we're trying to make things as easy as we can. Since we've upgraded some of the operating systems on the computers, we've made it so that they can sit down at a computer and get right into it. The computer, it goes on. If they say to print something, it automatically prints. They don't have to make selections or anything like that. So we're trying to make it easier for the seniors.
That's great. Can I, any questions about that? Any comments, Scott?
Don Berg again. I just wanted to add for jumping back into the fray with regards to technology at the senior center again. I think that the amount of money set forth for all those upgrades is, is very minimal. Trying to think of a more complimentary word than that. But I mean, you're, you're really keeping the budget, or not that there's a budget, the amount of money down to a a mi- a very minor amount for all the upgrades. And for what, I want to say thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I think we're ready to move on then. Thanks, Ed. Okay, ARPA 30A, which is the direct emergency call line at Button Hill for $53,000. And this is a Arlington Housing Authority request, and that bird is here.
Yes, good evening. I guess we'll discuss 30A and 30B.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
With regards to the direct emergency call line, just a brief history. We built Button Hill Senior Housing, the four individual buildings up there on Senior Way. The architects and engineer called for what they commonly refer to as a buddy system, where if somebody falls down in their bathroom or bedroom, they pull a cord, an alarm goes off outside the door, and hopefully one of the neighbors hears. Unfortunately, they put a system on the exterior that's only listed for interior use. So nobody can hear it. And even the person inside the unit can't hear, really hear it go off other than hearing a little faint screeching sound. And the lights, if you hold your hand over the light over the door and look at it, you can tell what the light is on or off, but you really can't tell otherwise. And why safety issue? Somebody goes and pulls that, doesn't go off. Now, I also will add that we are quasi-governmental. So in the past, for the generator, we've come in to ask for CIP funds. I've been told we're not eligible. So this is one case where our availability of funds and requesting funds for what we consider to be important issues is not something we put through the CIP process. So we're limited in that respect. And the fact that it's a call line button and some emergency needs to be monitored, it just, it, it's a too expensive, but that's what the code came in in. And so I guess the expense of $53,000 is justified because that's what somebody could call us and charge us to provide a safety issue at Button Hill. Basically, right, I'm not sure of the mechanics of the system right now. But it, if you pull a string and a switch in either the bathroom or the bedroom that are provided right now for safety concerns, it will, it will go to a, a new fire panel that has room on it because they gave us the cheapest fire panels they could. So it'll go to a new fire panel and they'll call, it'll make the call to our emergency service, monitoring service. And they will call the fire department. A unit, somebody has fallen down and you can't get up. We've had that at least twice in the past. And fortunately, the person that fell down, to get the proper service in one case, the neighbor was able to hear them through the floor yelling for help and able to call emergency services for them. So this would notify the fire department, notify what, what unit they're in, wouldn't require the buddy system and would need a lot of potential liability. The emergency generator at Button Hill, this contractor we, we contacted, $77,000. He recommends two generators between buildings 10 and 12 and 14 and 16. I'm not sure if this total, I can do the numbers, includes a couple of little amenities to make it quieter or not. But I think if we can get the emergency generators in there, that would be beneficial. It would also be beneficial for the sewage pump, which has no power source. And he said for our building number 12. So that if we get it extended out, if we have water, we just don't have any way to pump the sewage. Probably don't have a way to activate the alarm either. The tolls, sewage is flowing on the ground. So, and the emergency generators that only power the utility rooms, which would give us heat and hot water. The sewage ejector pump would be powered in this case. Give us sight lighting. And it'll give us one light in each apartment as an emergency light that would kick on when the power went out. And we'd like to provide that if we can. And again, this is another project that would not be covered in the CIP. So we're trying to figure out a way to fund the generators. I'm open to questions or any comments to the commission.
You know, we talked about this at your last, at your last presentation to the commission. This only provides heat. Doesn't provide any air conditioning or ability to cool in any time other than winter. Is that correct? I believe Laurie said it's not.
Provides heat during winter. There is no air conditioning provided by the generator.
Right, so there'd be no means of cooling because it was simply the, the furnace and one light in the facility.
The boiler, the circulating pump for the boiler, the fan in each individual apartment's fan coil unit to pump around hotter for the units. And hot water and the hot water circulating pump and the fire alarm panels powered by the generator. Before we essentially ran out of 1,000 gallons of propane and then the little tiny battery and fire panels would take a little there until it gave up the coast, but there you go.
Thank you. I see Jim Bullock has his hand raised.
Yeah, Jim Bullock, Laurel Drive. Question about this emergency call line button hill thing. Is this, you said, this is where you, you pulled up, is this the pull on the string thing and it activates something at the fire panel that which then calls the service? Or is this a wireless type of thing where residents have a pendant or button or something like that that they, they have on their wrist or something like that?
Well, I say I'm not familiar with the system. It may be wireless, but this is not a carry around a pendant system. This is a system that would integrate our existing switches and pull chains in the, in each bathroom and in each bedroom so that an alarm would dial our service and our service would call the fire department and know what unit somebody called for help, called for aid. But it would not be a pendant, a system that ties independent in a pendant that I'm aware of.
Okay, so, all right, so this, this ties your, okay, got it. It makes existing stuff work, existing hardware work.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It's a burden of liability of having the existing hardware not work.
Anyone else have a question, a comment? See any hands on Zoom? I see Joe Clang.
Joe Clang is your expert. So if someone falls down and can't get to a pull chain, you're out of luck.
Essentially, at this point in time, based on what we're asking for. Yes. And there's a, those, but do the seniors have individual alarms?
They could, but those are usually a subscription model that I'm aware of. So they're probably 20, 30 bucks a month for each apartment. As my knowledge, that's not included in the system.
That's, it's there. And we're wearing it at the time of the fall.
Right.
So if they're in the shower, they may have taken it off.
Yeah, and I, and I believe one of our residents actually has an Apple device. Not that I'm promoting anything. It's a, it's a watch that he wears. This, he has an accelerometer on it that would determine or something like that. And you know, I'm, I'm sure it's not 100% wonderful either. So that's one, another one of the reasons.
No. Shower, but.
Yeah.
It's here.
But you have a pull chain at least in your shower that activates one of those super quiet alarms.
Or phones. They all nine one one.
Right.
They're, they're not usually fixed phones anymore.
Right. I got both.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Donna. Yeah, I think we're going to move on then to ARPA 31, Historical Society, archival storage for Arlington Historical Society for $15,000. And I think Marc McCinda might be on Zoom. I saw someone called Mark.
Yeah, yeah, you, you've got me here. I'm not sure how to bring my face up on it. But Marc McCinda, 216 Luchon Road. The Historical Society has a start my video, okay? Okay, here I am. The Historical Society has a storage area. It's a garage, has a dirt floor. We're unable to really use that to archive anything. And we'd like to have concrete put in there, some upgraded lighting so that we can display things. We we've had to reject things because we didn't have a place to keep them. Some of our other storage areas could use some light upgrading, whether it just be materials, acid free materials to store, to store the the archived things in. Don't know if there's any questions I about that.
Anyone have any questions? Oh, Matt Clark is raising his virtual hand.
My virtual, yes, my, yeah, I'd like to voice my support of adding a cement floor for archival storage. Also, I received from Historical Society a request for donations for ADA compliance. I would urge the Historical Society to make a new application to the ADA as soon as possible for that money that you need to make Historical Society ADA compliant. This would start to the process of bringing arts to our town green. I think it'd be a wonderful thing if we can have the Historical Society open and functioning on a regular basis to the public. I I I don't know if that's appropriate or not, or, but it just it makes sense to me. So if if that's available and and you can do that and they don't approve all the money right away, maybe you can make that that application.
Mark, I know you had also considered making a separate application to the Economic Development Commission for the Historical Society. Were you able to do that?
Yes, we we did put in, we did put in application for that also. Knowing the money would be used differently. One, this would be dedicated to a specific project and the other one would be more help where we needed it. The one reason, Matt, that we didn't pursue the ADA compliance is that we already had the ball rolling on a fundraiser. And I kind of felt that box that you had to check, is there another way to raise money? Well, we were attempting to and I I didn't add it into this. And I'm going to shout out to everybody, thanks for your donations, we're doing fairly well. But other other than that, I'm hoping that we meet our goal in getting that facility open. It actually would be nice to open, have a public bathroom to be used by anybody when they have the green open for use. But anyways, but I don't know if that would be something that we could pursue after the fact or not.
Peter Snaka has his virtual hand up.
Thank you. I I also would like to fully support this project for the Historical Society. I think they do some fantastic work for our town and and the cost to the town is is minimal. And I think this would be a very valuable spending. Thank you.
Anyone have anything to add? Questions? Ralph Tullis has his virtual hand up.
All right, I got Don on mute. I I just want to add my support as well. I think everyone else is is has conveyed their their sentiments quite well. And certainly it it's something that needs to be maintained on our historical green. And that's it.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right, I think we're ready to move on then. The next item is, thank you, Mark. The next item is ARPA 32, the retention bonus plan for the Board of Selectmen. And in the amount of $32,250.
I would like to recuse myself from this discussion. Me as well. So this this proposal is a one time bonus to towns and staff. This is just town, not Board of Education, Fire Department, Library, simply town staff. It would give a prorated amount based on either their status as a department head or a staff member. This does not include elected officials. This is only hired employees. I will also mention that one individual staff member has come to me and asked that they be omitted from this. And that's my motto. In addition to those dollars, there's also dollars to have a a event, whether that be a luncheon now in the summertime or the fall, depending on funding or around the holidays for all staff. And that would include all staff of the town, including Board of Education. And again, this is a one time proposed bonus, so it would not carry forward any budgets. And again, it was prorated for their length of service. So if someone began with us into the pandemic, it did not start at the full dollar amount. If anyone who started with us sent this proposal, it's play, we decided. We did have a couple additional. I just want to let you guys know the reason why some of the members of our board have refused themselves is because they would be recipients of this money personally. And so they they decided to not vote on it because it's the path of the business. And I do believe, well, I guess we're ready for questions. All right, I I before I saw you're going to go, I saw Ralph Tools' virtual hand go up. But then your next.
Okay, I I want to ask a couple of questions. Did it, was anyone not able to work? Was anyone that had lost pay as a result of COVID? Was anyone unduly exposed to COVID during the timeframe that this bonus is supposed to cover? And if the answer to those three questions is no, I can't support this.
I will tell you that at various times, staff members, because of their exposure, did have to miss time. Most of them utilized their own personal time off in order to not be here. I will tell you that we serve the public in order to fulfill our fiduciary responsibilities to the town. Our staff remained working. We put lots of things in place to, for the safety of not just our staff, but the residents as well. Our staff, certainly that they could have left their job, but they chose to continue working to serve the public. We had to continue to to accept taxes. We had to continue to hold elections. We had lots of things, we we serve the public in person. Although we closed our doors to the public, we still saw people on an as needed basis and made appointments so as to limit the amount of contact. So yes, our our staff was exposed to the public. And their working conditions completely changed from pre-COVID to during the pandemic.
As did a lot of residences in this town, myself included. So there there were other people who were unable to work because their jobs were shut down. So I I just look at this from a fairness perspective. I I'm not sure this is appropriate. It's, I'm not going to debate it any further, it's just my opinion and we'll leave it at that.
So Don Burke was next.
I wanted a little clarity. I'm not going to comment on the retention bonus part of the plan, Ralph covered that. But with regards to the holiday, once a year event.
One time.
That's one time, not every.
All of this is one time, nothing would be carried over, that nothing would be used with regular we have nothing in the budget currently.
Would that include heads of board, boards and committees in that event?
That was not my initial proposal, but the board could consider that.
I just found when I was trying to put together a holiday event that with town funds, it was not supported and eventually died on a vine for lack of a better term. And I think that all this, this is one time and that's nice. I think at some point in time, I'll just make the comment how to reconsider supporting some funding and having a bet that supports all its volunteers as well as employees.
I can, if I could just comment, there is currently no funding within our budget or even the town's employees.
That's a shame.
The things that we do, either I have paid for myself or we've done kind of a potluck that there is, there, there is. We don't, we don't budget for that.
The town should, and that's why that's.
Well, Claudia, there's a couple online that came up. One is Peter Chaka.
Thank you. I I I'd just like to say that I I support Ralph in this. There was many people that are non-governmental workers who feared for the retention of their jobs throughout this. Not that they had to work through it, but that they wouldn't have a job coming through it. And and I think that that a bonus for people that didn't have to work directly with the public every day, like our firefighters, who I believe do deserve a bonus, is is not in in keeping with with what we should be looking at here. Thank you.
I'm in Donica also.
Yes, um, I tend to agree with Ralph, but my particular concern is about the party. It it looks like most of the items on this list, if not all the items on this list, besides the retention bonuses and and the festivities included, are what I'll say, long term positive impacts on the town, whether it's the lights or the firehouse furnace or the archives or the improvements at the Button Hill location. And that way they'll have a long, long term positive impact on the town. Whereas this item and one other listed later are are short term. And I thought the whole purpose of ARPA was help to help to get the town as a community back on its feet. So I'm concerned about that, so I would say no to that particular item because of those reasons. Thank you.
And I'm not sure, but I think Claudia raised her hand before you did that, so we'll go to Claudia first. Just a quick question, I work for the chapter. And I have, you know, heard the like, yes, my question with the party. Who are you inviting, you inviting the board of ed? But they're not paid employees and yet you're not inviting the other boards, is that what you said?
Not the board of ed, Board of Education staff, so teacher, all the the staff of the school.
Okay, paid employees, correct.
Okay, thank you. That's sorry, they're employees of the Board of Education, which is why I said that.
I'm Matt Clark, who's next.
Yeah, I just realized I never said my address, everybody else did, so Matt Clark, 42 Burt Lathan Road. My concern with this is that it goes to all staff. So if there's staff, Wellington staff, that actually served the public face to face and that was part of their job during COVID, then I would support a bonus for those people. The place where I was working during COVID, I I have a new job now, but I was working. We had people actually die, they died coming to the factory, so it it was a real serious issue for people who served the public directly. For people who who didn't come into the office, worked outside, those kinds of things. I'm sorry, I I'm I'm with the other folks, I don't think that's appropriate use of these funds. Thanks. By the way, I would support it if it was just, you know, just the folks who direct direct public service in person. Thanks.
So all of our staff, we were shut down, I apologize, I can't take that. It was a very short period of time and then we were all in person. No one worked from home except for on very rare occasions as needed. And all of our employees served the public in one capacity or another and have contact with the public, even those who work outside.
Oh, Sam Mike McPoo, please go behind you.
Mike McPoo, Copper Springs Drive. I don't want to comment so much on the validity of the request, whether I agree with it or not. I just think it's a process concern for me. The, just because these members felt was appropriate to leave the room shows us that this is a little bit of a meat situation. A lot of the members of the commission would be in a position of essentially voting themselves above us, which is why they left the room, which I appreciate. But then we have another one coming, so Stewart's in a position here where he's not one of those people with benefits. So he could vote on this one. But then another proposal comes up later, which is sort of the inverse, where those members could be back and Stewart would be eligible for bonus. And he would probably refuse himself. And then so it becomes sort of a circular thing. I think, I think we have, in a unique situation like this, we have some astute guidance already that exists. First of all, the chair has, this commission has raised this concern already in previous meetings. And Erica, as per select woman, brought up a concern when I went on the Board of Finance back in 2019 because I was a member of the fire department. Would there be a potential conflict of interest with my position on the fire department? And the fire department presenting budgets to the board. She sought legal advice for that, the legal advice from the town attorney, the same town attorney you still have is in written form. I've given it to the chair in the past, I know a while ago. And it's very clear what the state ethics rules are, is that a person who's on a commission that has authority over funding cannot give themselves any financial benefit. And they also can't represent or support anything from the organization that they might get a financial benefit from. So let's get all these people out of the jackpot and find another way to approve this. Again, I'm not, I'm not judging whether the bonus is a good idea or not, that's for other people who have commented on. I just think we should find a process that makes sure people don't say or or that the headline is, commissioners voted themselves above us. Let's just, let's find another way to get it approved, that's all, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. That's, and and I do, I will say, as Christina is the representative of the Board of Finance here and as the chairman of the Board of Finance, I completely agree with her concern as she represents the board. Because we are always looking for however to be the best stewards of the town's mind. And let's get that responsibility off the backs of these people so they don't feel like they're in conflict. Let's find another way to approve this. And the townspeople can say, yay, they love it, it goes through and then no one's in a jackpot.
I, oh, Phil Monty, yes.
Phil Monty, 16 Meadow Lane, just a question of promulgating procedure. Do you have a forum enough to vote, to be able to vote on this with all the members? This is just a question.
That that is a good question. We don't currently, we don't currently, if everyone were, if we were voting, which we're not doing now. And all of our remaining members are here who have. It's five members that would have to recuse themselves on this question. And we have 11 total, but if one or two of them are here, then I guess it becomes a majority of whoever is here present in person. So not a person, but in the meeting. So, yeah, that's a, that's a very good question that we've been wrestling with how, how, there's many scenarios where it could be able to do it. Okay, I see Matt Clark's, your hand is up, I don't know if it's again or just still.
No, it's again. Yeah, I I agree with Mike McPoo. I don't think it's appropriate for members to be voting or have an appearance to be voting or participate at all in this kind of discussion. Should go through a different kind of channel. And as far as, you know, I think that all staff, if if this thing does come happen, all staff eligible or I I think if you work day to day, serving the public face to face, then then you should be included in this thing if it happens. If you didn't work day to day, every day, serving the public, then you shouldn't. I mean, the 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 town crew, for example, I love the town crew, it's great. I see the guys have done very wonderful, I mean, but that's a, that's a. but that's a, that's a little different than, than serving the public face-to-face in an office and stuff like that. So anyway, thank you.
I'm Jim Bullock.
Hi, Jim Bullock, Laurel Drive. Just echoing some of the comments others have made. It, it really is a no-brainer to give that type of bonus for, for those who've had face-to-face contact with the public. I also have some of the same concerns that Mr. McCoo raised concerning the, the appearance of a conflict of interest. I've mentioned this many times in different public forums, including the original town meeting, that you can always follow the procedures we've have in the past. You can always bring something to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance can recommend the selectmen call a town meeting and then the public can decide if that's a good use or a good methodology to spend money. That's a tried and true method that's always worked for Willington. Thank you.
Michelle, I'm not sure.
Michelle Christensen, Birch Meadow Lane. I want to echo those that have spoken against the funding. I don't feel that it's the best use of funds that should be used to better the town. However, I also agree with Mr. McCoo, especially with finding a better way for the public to vote on this matter. However, if it goes to a town meeting, making sure that there's an anonymous way for people to be able to vote by ballot. So that way, you know, you're not sticking out by sore thumb. If for some reason you may disagree with it, hopefully if that happens, the town can take a better measure for voting. Thank you.
Yeah. I think the optics are pretty bad. I think everybody has been through an awful lot over the last couple of years, whether we have had, had ill people in our homes we cared for. We've lived with different circumstances. A lot of people have suffered. I know the governor meant well by reducing the motor vehicle tax, but my cars, which are one year older than they were last year, are possibly more in taxes this year than they did last year. And if anybody didn't pull out their previous receipts and look at it, maybe they ought to. I, I just feel that we're, we're singling out people who perform their jobs. I think there's, you know, thanks and, and some are elected and that might pay for a payoff for them at the ballot box, but certainly I don't think it's part of time. And, and obviously, I think, I think everybody feels sensitive to that. It's, it's just, it's just not the time. I think things that enrich the whole town would be much better appreciated. I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't want to try to, try to.
Anyone else have a comment about it or a question?
Christina. Hey, this is Tom Smith. Y'all, good evening. I want to give a shout out to Bob Wachinski, I think was on. It's, it's nice to see that because I know he was laid up a little bit. Doing my best to, to try to be quiet because I am on the ARPA Commission and listen to what all the folks have to say. And I'm doing that. I've done that. The, the thing with the employee re- with the retention bonus plan, my view is that, I don't know if you've noticed, but Willington has been a revolving door of employees since I was, since a long time. The pay in Willington, we train people, they get certified, whatever. They move on to greener pastures. For me, during and after COVID, this is a way to say to the Willington Town employees, we appreciate what you're doing. We appreciate you representing us. We're glad you're with us. For $32,000, for me, it's money well spent. Be able to tell the employees this one time that we think what you're doing, you're valuable to us. You're valuable to the town. We don't say that to our town employees very often in Willington. This is a big deal for me and I feel very strongly about it. I've heard you all. I get it. I disagree. And as far as the, that's why people are recusing themselves. This is, to me, it's a simple issue. The people that can vote, vote, and the ones that recuse, recuse, and they've left the room. And, and I don't, I don't get that point really, other than it's a way to say, we don't think you should do this. But I respect everybody's opinion, listening to you all with all these different things. But in this particular one, I wanted to speak because it was so slandered negative the other way. I, I, I felt I wanted to say something during this portion to just give a little different perspective on it. And that's it. Thanks. Thanks a lot.
Sarah Reese has a virtual hand up.
Sarah Reese, Pine Chris wrote, just a couple of questions. Are there stipulations on which employee gets it? I know there's new hires. Are they eligible for it? Is it a pick and choose? Is it for everybody?
I can speak to that. So when we put the plan together, it was staff in place and again, prorated for their length of service during the, during COVID. So we had, since I put this plan together, we had two hires that would, I'm sorry, three. It would not be eligible.
Okay. And then, oh, sorry.
So every other, Sarah, for, for clarification, every other employee was included in this. And we also took a separate plan to the Board of Selectmen that was just for elected officials. Because ARPA specifically says, if there, there are a couple of different places, if we didn't, depending on the youth we took the funds from, would not allow for funds to elected officials. So we, the Board of Selectmen voted that if there were additional funds and something was approved through ARPA, that three of the elected officials would receive a, a bonus from town funds, and that being the treasurer and the two registrars of voters.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification. Just one more question. What happens if you get the retention bonus and then that person leaves?
In all reality, Sarah, that's possible on any given day. I think we're well aware of the fact that our staff, and they have, in different times, could leave us, go to a private business instead of public, receive a sign-on bonus for starting, and probably make more money. And so this, for me, what this proposal to the Board of Selectmen and then here to ARPA was about helping to retain our employees. And much as say, thank you for all that you did and continue to do as we work in now different times, a way to encourage them to stay here. I recognize how difficult it is, budget season after budget season, to offer more pay to our, to our employees. And that, you know, we're coming up against that wall on a regular basis. And this was a means to do that without adding dollars that would, it would be way with the budget.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I was Stephanie Summers.
Stephanie Summers, Wyrode. I, you know, I think, I guess the way I feel about it after being in town for 25 years and thinking at first that the, that the town meeting form of government was a little quirky. I, what I've noticed is that there's a real common sense and a good amount of heart at our town meetings. And I'm thinking that the, the issue to me is sort of the ARPA Commission voting on, you know, pay for others on the ARPA Commission. It's, it's sort, it's an uncomfortable thing. It's not a real good look. You know, I, I feel like the town meeting part of it would, you know, I, I think, I think, I think that would be actually a good, a good discussion and a good opportunity for the town to actually get behind the idea of patting the town employees on the back. Because, you know, the, I will say, the, the only other concern I have, like as far as ARPA's role is, it would have been great if we had come up with some kind of a program, or someone had proposed some kind of a program that would reward, you know, townspeople for their public service during COVID. Because I think there are a lot of stories out there. It would have been kind of a cool thing to capture and it's comparable. So those are, I guess those are the things that are going around in my head. I don't fear the town meeting for coming up with commonsensical vote, particularly when they listen to one another. So that's, that's my feeling. Thanks.
Thank you. Peter Tanaka.
Thank you for letting me have a second question. My, my question is, are there any contract employees, unionized employees involved in this? And if so, is there any provision in the contract for bonuses in the contract? I, I, that may be a problematic point with our lawyer. Thank you.
There's no provisions that provide in this project with that prior to submission.
Sorry, can you, can you go again, Eric? I, I missed that.
There's no provision within the union contract.
Thank you. Is there any, is there any employees covered by this package that are, are unionized?
Yes. All of our, all of our employees are included in this.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question or comment?
Don Burke. I just say as a taxpayer, I'd rather get taxed and have this money come out of our town budget at some point by others, others have not taken out of the ARPA funds, especially when they have to be approved by those that are being benefited. I think it's pretty, pretty clearly when they said the optics are not good. I think the, it goes deeper than that. And that if we support our employees, we could certainly support them out of our budget.
I think it's important to note that those who felt they were directly benefited removed themselves from the conversation wholly. And so much has left the room, not even listening to the conversation. And I would assume by that act, which I do not intend to vote. Thus, they would not, they would not be voting. The rest of us would have to potentially deal with, with that particular topic. But it, it appears to me that they are, they do not even intend to partake in any discussion, the discussion or voting on. That will remain to be seen. They will have to make that choice. That is an individual choice, but I think it's important to know.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's important that they chose to do that.
Claudia, Ralph had his hand up online, and then you're next. Ralph.
Well, after listening to everyone and, and hearing their comments, I think I should soften my stance a little bit on this issue. I, I kind of like what Stephanie brought up about trying to handle this in a different manner, particularly possibly through town meeting, where folks can vote based on their experience. I also second the comment about the fact that we are a training ground for a lot of municipal employees. And I, I don't particularly like that, where we have to have a contract employee serve in a position that by our own regulations requires a town employee. I, I don't like the revolving door aspect. And I, I think what we need to work to is adequate compensation to, to enhance the longevity of the employees that we do have. And that's a little bit outside of this discussion, but it's, it's my sentiment. And I think that's enough said for now.
Claudia, just a question. Erica, you may have already addressed this. I assume you're not part of the.
I'm not.
Okay.
I'm an elected official. So elected officials would, yeah, elected officials will not even be considered. And the motion that was made at the Board of Selectmen, again, separate from this, but contingent on a possible outcome here, did not include.
I just didn't want the appearance. I'm not included. Anyone else? See any hands online? I don't see any hands in the row. Thank you all. I think it's time to move on then. Okay, you can tell them off the record. I don't know if it's like. While they're coming in, we can get started with ARPA 33, which is another Edgada request, but this one is for the Willington Veterans Foundation.
Just to give you a little background. We're a group of people that support the Willington residents that they never see. We're the ones that put the flags up on the flagpoles that you see in the town. We're the ones that maintain the Veterans Memorial. We fix things in town. When they break, we repair, we replace flags. We work with the scouts. We put grave markers down. What happened was, we got all of these groups together. They're veterans, both that served in war zones and did, did serve. We also have a number of town residents that are on this foundation. And basically what we're doing is we're trying to make sure that these things continue. The Veterans Memorial has been very popular. We have people that go there and they sit. But these things take money to maintain. We do try to raise funds. With the pandemic, though, a lot of that didn't happen. People weren't going out. People weren't, people would go over and visit the memorial and keep a safe distance, but we still had to maintain them. While people were not going out for COVID, a group of us went down on Memorial Day and we actually, for two years, we performed the, the ceremony at the, at the cemetery for veteran, for Memorial Day. While everybody, while the town did not have any Memorial Day services, we made sure the flags were up on the poles. What we're looking for is, as a group, we got together because we realized that when we're gone, who's going to do this? I mean, it's not a job that the town should, that town would be doing. It's, it's a veteran-type thing that we were working towards. We want to make sure the Veterans Memorial continues to exist. We want to make sure that these flags that everybody loves to see on the roads continue to go up every year. We want to make sure that every veteran that's in the cemetery has a grave marker and a flag. And there are quite a few in there that don't because there was no oversight influence. We also are interested in signage. We found out, and this has happened year after year. People in towns come up to me and say, oh, I didn't know that Memorial Day was on this, you were going to have a celebration on this day. Or I didn't know that, that we celebrate Veterans Day on a specific day at the memorial. So we're looking for signage for that that we can put up and take down. And that's all done by volunteers. That's all done by people that belong to our organization. And, and basically, it's the people that were doing the work before. It's just that we came together and we formed an organization so that we could control it a little better. We're looking at of some money so that we can replace the flags on the flagpoles. That's very expensive to do. We've had members that have taken and spent their own money to maintain some of these things. I've taken and spent money to buy wreaths and stuff for Memorial Day. I'm not looking for that money back, but I'm saying for some of these other things, like repairing the honor roll in front of the Old Town Law. It's in disrepair. At least it needs work. Who's going to do it? Well, it's not a job for the town. It's something that was put up by veterans and it's something that we're looking to do. We'd like to stiff Memorial Day up a little and maybe get flags to fall up. These three-by-five flags for all the branches of the service that we can put around the monument in this, on the town green during Memorial Day. We did a little more this Memorial Day. And granted, we didn't get the turnout that we had hoped, but I was really humbled by the number of people that came up to me. and expressed gratitude on how important it was and how they felt about what we did. So, what we're looking for, and this is pretty much it, is we are going to be, we are going to start doing our own fundraisers now that we're an organization. But we need something to get us started, because what we're doing is we're starting out with all these things that have to be fixed. So, we're looking at something, this is in support of the town. We're supporting the residents of the town by doing this. We're putting in our own time. We're not employees. We don't get salary. We do this all on our own. We spend our own gas money. We use our own vehicles. We beg Garland Steel to get it done.
Any, oh, I see Jim Bullock has his hand up. Does anyone else? Jim Bullock.
Yes, Jim Bullock, Laurel Drive. I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I'm very glad there's, there's somebody spearheading this kind of activity in our town. For our veterans, we can't do enough for our veterans. They, you know, many have paid the ultimate sacrifice for us. And I, I think that's the least we can do to honor them with appropriate flags and maintaining the monuments that we have in place. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Have you had, it's, you're doing a lot of things. There you are. Is it codified in any way? In other words, do you have any kind of instruction book or something where what you're doing with your group as it is now is written down? So that the scope of the activities and there also would be the possibility of handing somebody a piece of paper and say, could you be in charge of helping us with this task? Working on that?
Yeah, we have bylaws. We've established bylaws. We now have a federal IP number. We also have applied for a 501(c)(3) corporate status. We have opened up, we're working currently with the Cemetery Association, with the Scouts.
Historical Society.
Historical Society. We are actually working on historical documents to identify and identify and create a book pertaining to the history of veterans in Wellington. It's, it's going on, I mean. And as we get more people to join, and we're open, if this is a, you join for $5 and it's a lifetime membership. You're in there for a lifetime. Citizens as well as veterans have votes at our, we hold meetings four times a year. And they have votes at those meetings. So, it's not like we're just a group. It's actually a town group. It's, it's the whole town. We're hoping that eventually the whole town will join.
But you want the historical, you want the record so that, you know, you know everything that's going on. If you get other things, there's somewhere else so that other people can pick up the ball.
Our, our secretary has been documenting a lot of that.
So, in the town, there's 39 veterans that have died during the war. And what we'd like to do is having a stone or marker at the烈士 Memorial. But again, at $50 a stone, it'll take us a long time for that money. But that's from the French and Indian War, 1754 to present. So, we documented that. We documented all of ones that served in all the wars up to the Korean or Vietnam War. But we're still working since the memorial was from 2005. So, anybody that served since 2005 in Iraq, Afghanistan, or any involved situations have not been recognized. And that's one of the goals we're trying to get to.
We, we've identified, we've identified 44 residents of town that fought in the Revolutionary War. We've got, and Phil, you've got the numbers. I mean, Civil War, French and Indian War, War of 1812. I mean, there are residents, they were residents of Wellington and they served. But there's nothing out there identifying this. And that's one of our goals. That's one of the things as a foundation we're doing. We don't want this history to be lost. And the thing with the flags, people ask us all the time, when are they going back up? During the, during the pandemic, I know of people that went out and they would just drive around town just to see the flags. Just, just to get that feeling. That's, that's what we're doing. We're just trying to, we're trying to give back to the town the best we can.
And, and if you are a 501(c)(3), so the town can write you a check. Are you a 501(c)(3)?
We, we, I, let's put it this way. The IRS has our $275. The paperwork is filed. We're just waiting for it to come back. We do have the EIN number, so we can establish a bank account now. And we're going to, and that's, we're in the process of doing that.
And that's important. Great. Peter Tanaka.
Yeah, I, first of all, I'd like to thank the gentleman who's, who's representing the, the Veterans Foundation here. I, I don't believe he identified himself at the beginning, so I apologize for not having his name. But as a veteran, I, I, I truly thank him for his efforts.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? Don Burke.
Just a point of clarity. You had talked at one of the previous meetings about veterans funding the flags. At this meeting, you're talking about maybe the town at least helping to fund the flags. Is that accurate? Well, in, in the past, what's happened is the BFW and the town had got together and we funded putting the flags in the cemetery. And the Scouts helped that. That will continue. What we're after with these funds is to put flags and markers on the graves that don't have them, you know?
And I said before, the ones on the poles started four years ago. And we put up four, and then we applied to the town. And they said, go out and do it. Raise your own funds. And we got all the permissions and everything else. And we did. We put up 25 flags. Now we have up to 55 flags. Those will be paid for by individuals on a voluntary basis.
So, so we've really haven't had, the town hasn't given us money. The money that we phrase. And, and what this is going to do is this gives us a head start so that we can start our fundraising. So maybe we can get enough on an ongoing basis to keep this going. Thank you. You're welcome.
Anything else? Anyone else? I think that, thank you for your service too. Next one, ARPA 34, storage boxes. Public Works for Evictions. Six seven hours.
All right. So basically, it's a 20-foot storage container. Currently, we have one now that we put all our, like, winter stuff in it when it's summer, and summer stuff in it when it's wintertime. So when we have an eviction, the movers come in, we move all the stuff out of our connects box. They put the stuff in there. If there's too much stuff, we put it outside and cover it with a tarp. So this way, we would have an extra storage box. This box would go up at the transfer station and it would stay there all the time. It wouldn't be at our Public Works garage. So if there is an eviction, they would bring the stuff to the transfer station, to that connects box. And then 15 days later, we have eviction sale and then stuff goes in. It's just basically an extra.
It's important to note that by statute, the town has to take possession of things from evictions, despite continued efforts by state and local municipal leaders to get that changed. The, the cost of storage is borne on each individual municipality. So, for instance, we recently had an eviction where we had probably the equivalent of two of the boxes of storage from one home. Coming out of COVID, we could, in the large moratorium on evictions, it's possible we could have a considerable amount at any one given time. Some towns pay for storage units. Troy's asking for one storage box.
Comments or questions on that one? Matt Clark.
So, I'm a little confused. I'm not familiar with this. So, the town of Wellington has to store the personal property of people who've been evicted from houses in Wellington?
Correct.
I see all the time, I see all the time, stuff stacked, not in Wellington, but in other towns and cities in Connecticut. I see all the time, stuff stacked outside on the lawn.
I can only speak to what we do in Wellington, but it is by statute, unfortunately, Matt, that is the town's responsibility. We have to notice, legally warn that we have an auction 15 days after if the individual or the home, the occupant did not retrieve their goods. So they have enough, they have 15 days to retrieve their belongings and then we hold a sale. At that auction, any proceeds, dependent on the cost of the town, could be recouped. And then the rest of the proceeds have to be turned over to the individual. I can tell you, in my time, we had yet to have anybody purchase anything at our auctions. And we've had a handful. But it, it is, it is the responsibility of, of the municipality. And it is frustrating that the cost is, is on, is on us.
And I'd like to add that the municipal, municipality is also responsible for keeping those goods safe and out of the elements. Because if the people come forth and want their stuff, and if it's been damaged by the town, then the town is responsible for making that one thing.
Frustrating, Matt, but true. Any other comments on that one? Questions? Oh, we have Troy here.
One thing, that doesn't apply to storage, so, like, the storage units, stuff like that.
No, he's asking for a sort, no.
Yes, if they did.
If they, if they were evicted from there, I don't know. I think they can hold their own option. I believe this is just probably residential. So whether it be an apartment or a home, people are addicted.
So it doesn't, none of the storage units.
And we continue to ask for legislation to take all this off of municipality. The bigger town, the more huge problem.
All right. I think we can move on then. ARPA 35, bring you our communitycares.org in Wellington. This is a community services department request.
Sort of. Okay, so, there's Michelle on here. Is that, that's not? Okay, so I'll speak very briefly about it. Your community care is a 501(c)(3) organization that connects volunteers that they do background checks and all that. And connects them with seniors in the community who need assistance. And this is, basically, this would be my department's boots on the ground. You know, people who need snow, clean up their cars. People who, you know, who will go out and raise somebody's leaves. I can't do those things. My department and my 801(c)(3) is nowhere. So, this organization requests more money than what I budgeted for them as partners with them. Basically, to get more volunteers in Wellington to do these things. In Wellington, we have a very large senior population and the need just keeps coming. So this is a good way to meet that need with a safe way.
Can I have the individual founder of your community care? Is, she's not a current Wellington resident, but a willing to native, if you will, in so many ties. Jenny, do you remember, how many towns she said she was in, in the state? They're working in many towns, the larger.
There's many towns. I don't know all the towns I have any, but yeah.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Peter Tanaka has his hand raised.
Yeah, is there, is there an ongoing cost to this? Is there going to be a continuing cost pass, this money here that's going to be required from the town?
No, I don't see that as being the case. It's basically to connect people with the seniors. And whether or not they continue to do so, that's up to them. But it would basically be to establish them in the community.
Okay, so it's a one-time cost. Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. I think we can move on. The next item is ARPA 36, the Boy Detention Bonuses for Fire Department Employees. And that is, I'm going to press that one, that requires $17,000. Alex is on. Is Alex on? Oh, there he is.
I am here. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'm in Texas, so this is a little difficult. So this was put together by the Board of Directors as a one-time bonus for the employees. So that they, you know, pretty much the same as the town. We had eight people affected from COVID from coming to work. Somewhere out for a long duration from being very sick. You know, it's, it's the same plan as the town, just funded or scaled down a little bit for the management side to $1,500 and $1,000 for the regular employees.
And I know, Alex, you weren't here when we had the first hearing on this, so.
I was not.
There were a couple of questions that we all had that I, that the board had at that time.
Okay.
Typically what they were. One was about the officers that are on the list, if they were.
They are, the, everybody that's on there is on apparel. They do get paid, whether it be their full-time employment or part-time per diem or night shifts, stuff like that. Everybody that is on that list get paid or gets paid in some form or another.
Can anyone, can anyone else have any other questions that we have?
To help pass the time while we're doing research. Mike LaCoop, Clover Springs. I, it came up in the discussion when I first heard this presented. I thought, well, what about the volunteers? And I think what was clarified in the previous meeting is volunteers are not eligible within the ARPA program. Is that true? So volunteers wouldn't be able to be in this anyway.
Right.
So maybe there's an opportunity for the fire departments to get together through other funding processes to look at what they may want to support for volunteers or not. But it can be through this process, right?
Correct. Correct. I, I mean, I think you probably could do like an event for them, or, but I don't think.
Yeah, it's not an ARPA thing.
Checks, sorry, but yeah, yeah, fortunately. Matt Clark, hand up.
I had the same comment that I had regarding the bonuses for town employees. And that is, I would only support this if the, if the fire department or fire workers actually in person served the people. I don't know if that's the case or not. Maybe it's 100%. I don't know. But.
So, sorry, 100% of the people on there did serve the public. A lot of the people, especially the officers, the people that work the extra shifts. We had people working five, six, seven nights a week going out doing calls because we had such an impact to our staff. So yes, every one of those has dealt with COVID patients multiple times. And at least eight have been diagnosed with COVID from coming to work. And it's been traced back to their working with us in Wellington.
Thank you.
It was that most of these employees were compensated with overtime, right? If they were, or if they got sick, were they compensated or?
At the beginning, yes. At the, once things started to shift a little bit, no, they had to use time. So some were using time off when they got exposed. Some did get, if they worked extra shifts, they did get overtime. But a lot of it was the per diem, so it took all, they didn't get a whole lot of overtime. And at that point, their pay rate was very, very low. They're making anywhere from $13 to $14 an hour.
Any other questions or comments?
Mike LaCoop, Clover Springs Drive, again, I just wanted to echo my comments earlier that let's get the people who are on this commission. that, um, let's get the people who are on this commission out of the jackpot, potentially voting for their or each other's bonuses and let's find another way to get this approved, that's all.
If I ask a question through, kind of through you to, to Mike McCoo. So, w- would it be acceptable to you, like, if, if all the people that were getting any bonus at all left the room and just the people left voted on this proposal? I'm just, because you just mentioned it, again, I, I wanted to ask you, I'm trying to get a better sense of what's acceptable, acceptable to people.
Well, so I appreciate the question. I don't know what, whether it matters so much if it's acceptable to me. Um, I think just I bring a certain amount of understanding of the ethical concern because of what I've participated in over the last few years on board finance. And one of the things that I do, my own choice is, even though by town ordinance, I am often eligible for tax abatement because of my volunteer service, I don't take that. I refuse it every year because I want to take the extra cautious step of not having any potential in propriety while I'm on the board of finance, even though it probably isn't the conflict, I'm not taking that chance. So all I'm saying is, let's be cautious. Let's, let's not have a situation where someone can say that the commissioners have voted their, voted for raises for their commissioners or for other commissioners on this panel, let's find a way. I, I'm not saying anything against the bonuses. I'm saying let's find a way to ensure there's no image of inappropriate, that's all.
So can, can you, you don't want to answer my question?
Did I, I didn't answer it, I'm sorry.
You didn't answer my question. Hypothetically, what, si- since you brought it up and you're talking about it, what if everyone that's, that, that's on the table for a bonus gets up and leaves and the rest of the people vote? Is that, is that clear or no?
Well, I think the headline still is commissioners vote to give commissioners a bonus. That's what I'm worried about. That's part of my job on board of finances to protect the town from financial choices that might be questionable or risky. We talk about risk management at board of finance meetings all the time. You know, do we need to give more money to the tree budget because there's a risk of trees falling down and then injuring town, townspeople driving down the road? Right, it's risk management. So I, I'm not sure what the right solution is, you know, that's up to either this commission or to the townspeople if they go that way. Um, I suspect this may just move on regardless anyway. I'm just bringing up the concern so people have a chance to think about it. It's, etc.
And any, anyway, Mike, I, I do, uh, applaud you for your, your stand on, uh, the, uh, retention program. I also have done the same thing on this commission, just FYI, anyway. So, but I, I patterned myself after you, so thank, okay, well, thank you.
Uh, Matt Clark has his hand up.
Yeah, I just want to express my support for the view that Mike McCoo had, that, um, from a risk management perspective, it doesn't, not helpful to have members of the commission, um, who are not directly employed by the town or not directly going to get bonuses, but they're on the same commission as others who will. That presents a problem, um, not only from a, uh, you know, a perceptual standpoint, but um, I, I would say, you know, I don't know what the regulations are regarding ARPA, but I'm not quite sure that this would pass that test either. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. I think the best thing to do is just play it safe and not, not, not move in this direction, not do it this way. Thank you.
Well, I was separate. Stephanie has her actual.
Sorry to throw that curveball, Steph Summers, Why Road. The thing, the thing that bothers me about this, this request, you know, townwide is that, that it sort of, uh, creates a sort of system of inequity to me because we are purposely not including other, uh, separate entities from the town employees, uh, from the town employee group and so, you know, so like, you know, the library and other departments, but mo- most glaringly, the other fire department because they're all volunteers, is sort of not in the same category and I don't, you know, I know that it's not popular to say, oh, withhold it because others like them are not getting it, but I mean, we, we had a serious emergency call during COVID and, um, the majority of the responders were Hill people, so I don't know, it's just, it, there's something about that that bothers me. There's nothing that bothers me about rewarding first responders. Um, it's more of an equity issue to me.
May I make a comment? Is that all right?
Oh, yes.
Um, I absolutely agree with you, Stephanie. I would love to find a way that we can give all of the volunteers something. Um, I just know through ARPA, we can't do anything with the volunteers. Um, one of the biggest things during the start of COVID, we tried to get all of, anybody that wasn't on any ambulance, on the ambulance not to go to calls unless they absolutely had to, or unless the ambulance crew was asking for help, to try to limit our exposure. That went from, for us and Wellington Hill, we worked very closely throughout all of this, um, to make sure we have the same policies and procedures and make sure that the crews were being as safe as possible. Uh, the reason we did the paid staff was they were the most exposed, handling the patients in the back of the ambulance.
Thanks, Alex.
Hey, Christina. And I mean, I don't mean to belabor all this, but obviously it's really, all of this is really important. Um, and, um, Erica, in, in, everybody, um, what I, what I think I'm hearing is perhaps there's, there's some support for a salary study committee or a salary study. Can I ask you? Um, is that something you've thought of on the board of selectmen?
Not pertaining to this situation, you mean just in general?
In, in general, I, we've heard some support, we've heard some support with, um, yes, the salaries and, and things, may, maybe we should study, look at the whole thing. I don't, I don't know, I'm just.
Tom, I'm not opposed to that. I, I know in, um, in, in my tenure here, I have multiple times proposed increase in salary um, for many of our staff, our department heads, and time and again, um, that is turned down because we can't afford it. So I, you know, while I, I'm open to the idea of a salary city, which we have done in the past, um, you know, it, it ultimately, uh, falls on, uh, funding and giving this moving through the board of finance to move on to voters to potentially on a permanent base, more permanent basis, fund those salaries. So if this has been talked about, I, I, I asked for increase for multiple, uh, individuals and so.
Maybe, maybe this could be a little bit of a groundswell of support for looking at the salaries of the, the town employees and the fire department, and I'll stop with that and just throw that out there as a a thought.
Uh, Matt Clark.
Yeah, I know other councils have done that. I've sat through presentations on it, um, salary study. Um, but the key issue there is which towns do you compare yourself to? We are not, we are not Mansfield. Um, so that, not, as a citizen, I would support that absolutely. Provided you look at towns that are like Wellington. Thank you.
I can tell you that in, in past, um, uh, instances where I have brought forth salary, uh, studies for uh, our department heads, most recently our tax collector, I used to like towns, both like in, in size and pop and or population. Um, and again, have been met with, um, we can't continue, we can't afford to continue that. And then we've lost good staff to that. I'm not opposed to having a broader discussion. I, I think it would be worth it. Um, I still think in, in terms of COVID, I, I stand by, um, the the projects that were put forward. Thanks, everyone. We're gonna move on to the Arpa thirty-seven, two thousand twenty-two, John Dear's skid steer for Public Works for sixty-eight thousand hours.
Oh, all right, so it's a three twenty-five, uh, skid steer on tracks. Um, it's kind of a multiple use tool. Um, we're doing some road construction projects instead of putting our backhoe or payload in the road. This is a smaller piece of equipment. Um, you can buy multiple attachments with it. Currently at the transfer station, we mow our, the transfer station with the zero terrain, where the skid steer, we could put a bush hog in the front of it, we could put a milling head on the front of it, snow blower on the front of it, there's multiple attachments. Um, milling heads for paving, uh, doesn't mean that we're gonna go buy every attachment, but there's multiple attachments for uses with this piece of equipment.
Troy, this was one of the questions I brought up at our last commission meeting, was, um, there are lots of extra things this could do. If your budget didn't allow for that, um, do you feel you'd still get as much use out of this machine?
Absolutely, yeah.
And that you, you expect, like expectancy would be?
What did you say? I didn't, I couldn't hear the answer.
Fifteen to twenty years.
Would this replace an existing piece of equipment? No, absolutely not. Would this increase your maintenance budget?
Well, for the first two years of two thousand hours, John Dear covers the oil changes and everything like that. Eventually, yeah, with oil change and maintenance, it would increase it a little bit, absolutely.
So having had the, the learning experience of working with Troy for the last three budget seasons on capital and on the cap, on being on CIP and on board finance, um, this is a little challenging because this is a new request. There are a lot of new requests in ARPA, so that doesn't eliminate it by any means, but we, we have sort of worked and pushed back and forth, working with Troy and Erica, figuring out what are the best capital expenses. Public Works obviously needs to have a lot of capital, but Public Works is, is an expensive budget in town and it's an expensive capital budget because it has to. Um, but it is well-funded. There have been a lot of dump trucks and, um, after a couple of years of battling back and forth, we ended up approving the excavator this year, which is a new piece. Um, Public Works currently has, I think they could make the use of this device, this tool for sure, but they have a lot of equipment and they have currently two backhoes and a payloader, so there are three loader-type vehicles already. Um, I, it's, it's outside the capital process, um, when we're at a point where we don't, we have more requests than funding. I, I'd like to see something like this in the capital process. You know, we finally fought to this year to say, okay, we can justify the excavator. We're paying for that this year and then in leases for the next few years. Let, let's talk and let's have CIP meet and discuss it if that is the right next thing, because the next thing that was on the list was a bucket. So if maybe the skid steer takes place of the bucket truck, or maybe this coming fall, we're gonna hear we also need the bucket truck. So I, I think it should be part of the capital process.
So, Mike, the reason why it's not a capital process is for three years, I fought for an excavator. So, I mean, Public Works, we're a small group. We're out there trying to do stuff, trying to get the guys to do more road projects and we're getting handicapped by CIP. So this right here is a benefit piece of equipment that I don't have to sit in a private meeting for time in, time out and argue over a piece of equipment approved to someone, but then. So it's not, it's a versatile piece of equipment that can be used and three backhoes, one backhoe's getting traded in for the excavator. So we have a backhoe and a payloader. Most towns have. So it's not like we have extra stuff. And the extra stuff with dump trucks, we've got two new dump trucks in the three years I've been here. One was with a contract. We don't have a contract. So that's why that one dump truck was here. Other than that, we bought one dump truck for Public Works.
So we bought three dumpsters.
You, you have not bought three dump trucks?
The third one is July one, the third one is in this year.
Are we gonna get it this year? Like it, it's.
The taxpayer money is tied up.
Still, by the time it comes into, it will be two thousand twenty-four by the time it comes.
Mike McCoo again. I completely understand your point, Troy, but that's the process. You're supposed to come to the board of finance and CIP and battle about it. Not, not, not adversarially, but you're supposed to battle about it because that's how you justify, as a director of a department, that's how you justify to taxpayers that you're gonna use a bunch of their money. That's exactly what the process is for.
Now, somebody added taxpayers. It's, uh, the whole big group of.
Sure, but it's also sixty-eight thousand dollars that cannot be used for another project that the taxpayers would benefit from or might have to fund another way. So it's still.
The taxpayers are benefiting it because it's still something we could move forward.
Absolutely, right. And the taxpayers benefit when we fund capital projects for schools and for fire departments and they all have to fight for it. Just like Public Works and you got the excavator this year because we've spent enough years going back and forth, you saying why you needed it and we fund it. That's the process. It's, it's wicked expensive and that's how we get to spending that money.
We can argue that there are multiple projects on here that should have helped this process and just give it a process.
Right, but there's a huge capital process for DPDW and there's a lot of money going into capital.
I, I think I see a whole process for all things across the board, not a different set of scenarios for one department. I think it's important for our residents to recognize that there's not a separate CIP project or process for DPDW. It's the same process.
That's actually my point.
And some of those have skipped here, there's been no discussion of that, but I think it's important to make sure we keep that that open, transparent process. Your Tanaka, I think had his hand up first. Oh, sorry, Peter, Ralph was first. And then Rob DiMillo was after that. Ralph?
Do you recognize me, Christina?
Yes.
Uh, okay, Ralph, Tullis, forty-seven Village Hill Road, um. One thing I think that would help everyone involved here, who's unfamiliar with Public Works is a list of the equipment we have that's comp, not necessarily comparable, but can do the job that this piece of equipment can do, uh, and their ages, that would be helpful. Um, I understand what a skid steer is, uh, it's, it's to, to use a, a, a bit of a pun here, it's a big boy's toy. But a very functional toy, so please don't take that wrong, Troy, I don't mean that. In, in that regard, there's a lot of things that can be done with it and I can appreciate that, but it is a big chunk of money. And it's going to possibly ad- adversely affect everything else on the, on the list here. So maybe Mike McCoo has a good point that this should go through CIP. Uh, I've always felt that we've underfunded Public Works, not necessarily from the equipment perspective, but from the work that needs to be done perspective and that's what I'd like to see money go towards. Uh, we have a lot of road projects that really should get done that, uh, we just aren't, don't seem to be able to fund them. Um, I, I wanna support it, but I, I, I see the dollar, the dollar amount being insignificant and, and unfortunately I can't. That's all.
Uh, then Peter Tanaka.
Uh, boy, you can really feel Troy's frustration viscerally out here. Uh, and I, and I understand that completely. However, it's the same problem that I think we've been hearing from, from every department tonight as far as where's the money coming from, how much money do we have? And in, in that regard, I, I think I'd like to support Mike McCoo. Thank you.
I think Ron DiMillo had his hand up. Um, Ron, did you want to say something? Uh, well, Matt Clark was after that, so, Matt.
Yeah, I, not being on CIP and not being, not attending any of the CIP meetings, I think they happen during the day. So I wasn't aware that this was not on the CIP list. Um, so I guess I would just say that, um, I don't know why we would, this would come up at this juncture, um, if it's not, if it was such a need, why wasn't it on CIP or, or, I, earlier, so, um, or, or so there's a debate about it, I mean, um. anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Sarah Reese?
Sarah Reese, kind Chris Road. I just wanted to shout out Mike McCoo. I appreciate his thoughts on perspective tonight and I think he's made some pretty valid points. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Anyone else?
Just a short comment. As much as I like to support the equipment, Public Works. This item does detract from the total bond funds and some of this are not eligible for CIP funds in that list, so. I guess I can support this skid steer through the ARPA vote. People that are not eligible for CIP.
Anyone else in the room? See another yellow hand. Ronald DiMillo? You just need to, I'm new.
Okay, am I on?
You're on.
Hi, good evening to everybody. I would like to support Troy on this matter. I live on Hancock Road. I see what these guys got. I do understand quite a bit about construction. And it does do a lot. As far as being raised in a sit meeting, I don't know yet. I'm new to these town meetings, how that goes, but they do a tremendous job at Public Works and they should get what they need. I mean, if this is needed, they can do an array of jobs, then it, it should be granted. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, you might be ready to move on. Okay, I think we're ready to move on. ARPA thirty-eight. Installation of perimeter key location traffic cameras. A question for a selectman and the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So this item is a little bit different than some of the other items that have come before you. This was a request that came to the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen, we're, we're I won't say divided, but we were all kind of torn on whether or not this was something we all wanted to see move forward. We have lots of questions and lots of concerns out of the project, but it was important for us that the process get public input. So with that, this proposal and this dollar amount is for the potential installation of up to eleven traffic cameras at various points. Most of them in and around town lines, exits, on modern off ramps on eighty-four. They are all, with the exception of one potential on state roads. Not on local roads. These would not be cameras that would be used in neighborhoods. They would be potentially for the most part, able to be used by state police and law enforcement in, in the potential review of certain things, be able to see cars that came into and out of Wellington. There has been discussion as to whether or not they would be valuable to residents to be able to see roads in times of traffic accidents or weather related issues. Again, the, the view of these cameras will be limited to very specific individuals. They would not be cameras that be monitored on a regular basis. There would be ongoing costs, which we are still working to determine, but we think that the software, the platforming for these cameras would begin to run us around three to four thousand dollars a year. Maintenance and repairs recommended could be about ten percent of that cost. And there is, this is at the, what we believe to be the maximum end, so the maximum amount of traffic cameras and the maximum type of camera. So there are different levels of cameras, the installation, kind of a choose your own adventure, if you will. And this dollar amount is based on the most expensive piece, so the rest is yet to be determined. I will tell you that this project came to us from Michael Koo. And so I'll ask Mike if he wants to elaborate on anything more specific on the cameras.
Sure, thank you. I think Erica covered it pretty well in short. We've discussed it some at previous ARPA meetings. Public input on this is really critical because it brings up all sorts of questions about privacy and things like that. What's being reported, you can see it and all that stuff. It is in fact the kind of thing that is operating all around us in public. As I used the example of previous meetings, anywhere around the University of Connecticut area, there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cameras out there and doing this same thing. The use is controlled. The software has very high levels of security and control functions. If anyone looks at it, they, they're tracking the identity, who's looking at it, what they look at. So there's, there are a lot of controls. Partly because there are a lot of legalities potentially involved. There are not typically privacy issues because they're only documenting what's happening in the public atmosphere, essentially, of public roads. The original intent of me bringing this forward is because I've worked with systems like this at other places and I've seen them solve crimes sometimes within fifteen minutes of the crime occurring. I've seen them benefit safety from understanding road conditions, traffic, a lot of different things like that. There's no benefit to me of any kind. I'm not tied in with the company. I get nothing from this. Except possibly working more to help provide information if it went forward to help support the project. I just thought that it was a, you know, after being involved with the committee that did the emergency communications plan, which I assume we're rolling out pretty soon, right? That got me thinking even more about what things are we doing for the public? And then seeing all the activity like on social media about all the car break-ins, especially in the north end of town. People going through people's yards and cars and all that. I got thinking, wow, this might be a really great tool. I did talk to Erica two budget seasons in a row because I knew as a citizen, I couldn't present this as a project. I don't have the, I can't sponsor this project as a citizen. She felt it was not the priority, the right priority at the time. I respect that decision. So that was two budget seasons of it, you know, not getting into public discussion or funding. And then when ARPA came along, I started scrambling to try to get updated information and prices. And it took a little while to do that. I then presented it to the Board of Selectmen. As Erica said, they brought it forward so the public can discuss it. Again, I get nothing out of this. My, I just see that it is a potential quality of life, public safety benefit for the townspeople and I think it's really important that we hear if the townspeople have interest in this or not. And one last point that Erica made is it's priced at the maximum possible of this design. It's also priced for the contingency and it is the latest prices. So the full cost of it is, you know, it's a good, strong number. It wouldn't likely be any surprises and it would be easy to dial it down. As Erica said, there are different levels of cameras you can use. You could do this entire project, every one of the locations that are noted there for maybe half the price if you've used the lower level cameras and still have pretty good documentation of what's going on at those entry points to town. And as far as the locations, as Erica said, on and off ramps from the highway, town line on like Route one ninety-five of the Mansfield Town Line, Route thirty-two at the Mansfield and Stafford Town Line, I believe, are the locations that were picked. I did consult with the state police in putting the plan together. They said they would limit their involvement in the design because they don't want it, they don't want someone to interpret it as a tool of the state police to invade privacy or violate any rights that people have. However, they use it. They can use it daily. They do, like when I was talking with Lieutenant Palmer, his officers have, they have on their phone and they had access to cameras like this in, say, like Burn. And they could, if there was an incident, open it right up on their phone and see what's going on in that area if it was in an area where it's a camera. So they do agree it's a benefit. They just participate at a low level in the design to maintain those, you know, sort of public protection things. So it has been vetted to some extent to the state police. They challenge with DOT because of state roads. I have two different people from the camera companies saying, yep, we're doing it on state roads all over the state. We'll get you the contact so that the town can talk to that person. And then I know Public Works or Erica said, you've talked to DOT and they said, no way, you can't do that because it's on a state road. So we're, we're getting mixed answers. I'm still waiting. But I know in the vendor that I talked to for the pricing, I checked with them again today and they are doing these in Connecticut and Massachusetts right now. Some funded by state DOT, some funded by towns, some even funded by individual properties. They're of course doing commercial security also with the same type of equipment. So I don't know, people have questions and I think that's as much as I can overview it.
Well, we had a couple hands up already, but I'm not sure.
Okay, Jim was first. Oh, oh, no. Matt, Matt, you were first.
So I learned a lot about this just from Erica and Mike talking about it. I attended the Board of Selectmen meeting, so there's a lot of extra information that I was not aware of when the Board of Selectmen voted to bring this to ARPA. So some of the comments that I had written here that I was gonna follow along with no longer pertain, so I'll just try and make my way through it, I guess. So the way I understand it, there's various cameras that would be installed on roads, mostly state roads that facilitate entry and exit from Wellington. The cost is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. At the time, the Board of Selectmen passed this, the maintenance costs were unknown, but I think from what I'm hearing, the maintenance costs would be six thousand a year. I'm not quite sure, or less.
He said together, Matt. You said three to four. Three to four thousand? Those are estimates right now, so since that meeting, we're beginning to gather information.
Right, so cameras would record all vehicles and pedestrians entering and exiting Wellington on the roads that are monitored. And the viewer would need to be logged on into the camera system when it's turned on. And the benefits are listed as used for emergency situ, I didn't, this was from the packet that you guys looked at, the Board of Selectmen, so used for emergency situations. Public safety. Monitor who's coming in and out of Wellington and keep track of our road conditions and traffic accidents. So I, I don't see where, I don't quite understand. I don't think cameras are gonna deliver on those things. How exactly would viewing a couple hundred yards of roadway in four or five or six locations, or now I guess it's eleven locations? How would that benefit public safety or road conditions? Or traffic accidents? I mean, we have hundreds of thousands of yards of road, many millions, I don't know of, of roads and we're gonna monitor a couple hundred yards? And that's gonna make a difference. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't quite understand it, so. Most of these, you know, the CCTV camera systems, they remain on all the time and you know, every time I've seen them anywhere, they're on all the time. And I, I was wondering who safeguards, who would see that, those, those cameras? I mean,
Address that a little bit, Matt. So a lot of the same questions you have, the Board of Selectmen have. Okay, so I, that's why I started this presentation, but we moved this forward so that we could have good open dialogue with the public. That we needed a lot more public input before the Board of Selectmen put our rubber stamp on, on this project. So to the recording portion, it's not only being viewed when someone's watching. You have the ability, only certain individuals who would be authorized access would have the ability to watch it right then and there, but the majority of it, I would say, we would have to, utilizing the rules of these kinds of cameras, put into place our own criteria for how they were used and who could view them, but that they would be recorded. Probably, Mike, do you know, like a thirty day
So most, most municipalities or organizations do a ninety day recording and the reason for that is that sometimes it's based on crime reporting and investigation. So if someone is out for a week or they don't go to their back shed for a week and then discover that their Harley was stolen out of the back shed, it takes a week for that to happen. Or they're on vacation. It takes a week for them to realize that some act has happened on their property. You've lost a week there. Now you contact the police, you file a report, it takes a little time to do investigation. If they feel that the cameras might be of value, that the police will typically they may access, depending on if it meets a criteria that they can access it as an emergency, then they'll access it right away, look at the report. Typically though, they'll get a warrant to look at the report. So they may need a few days to write the warrant and get the judge to approve it. So typically they do ninety days, which allows time for all these things to happen. If the recording is then determined to have valuable information, it gets secured by law. All of that is maintained on servers by people who do this every day. So all the legalities of how you control the recordings and how you store them is all handled by people who are doing it, for the state of Connecticut, the big towns. So we don't get involved in that part other than setting up our local policies.
I would say, Matt, from, from my perspective currently, I don't see anyone within the town of Wellington monitoring these on a regular daily basis. Not only do I, we don't have the staff, so we don't have our own law enforcement. Somebody wouldn't be watching them every day. I think we would, in, in my estimation, we would look at them if the need arose. And so that's some of the questions that the Board of Selectmen had in this process.
But, but I, I'm, I understand. Thank you for both. So I, I'm not, I'm still not getting it here. So this apparently is mostly about after there's a crime, helping the police investigate with video. Is that what we're saying?
That would probably be the first tier or the most critical way that it would be used, yes. And then there are secondary benefits talked about in the proposal and like, for example, they said he didn't think it would be too much benefit for him to look at road conditions. But if we have the system, he would certainly appreciate having the app on his phone. He'd probably say, well, since we have it, I might as well look and see, you know, what road conditions look like or whatever. The, so the, the secondary benefits that the town might use are definitely less than the value of them documented. Who came and went through a gateway into town? And it could be something that's exigent in an emergency. You know, some, something happens and it's happening right away. The state police, even from the barracks, could look right away and look back thirty minutes. And see thirty minutes maybe and say, oh, we see this vehicle, that's something we have to investigate or whatever.
Yeah, I, you know, when I was at the Board of Selectmen and this was reviewed and then voted on to code of CIP, excuse me, to ARPA. I, I didn't know any of this. I mean, so these cameras would go to the, to the state police. One of the things I had written down here was, you know, what about the state police? I mean, so it would go to state police, but no one would be watching the cameras. It would be used for after the fact investigations and proof and, and stuff like that. After they get a warrant, we hold it for ninety days, all those things that you just talked about, so. I mean, just continuing on here, I mean, I, I, I don't know. I mean, this is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The, and it would record all the vehicles entering and exit, but I, I guess you could review that hours and hours and hours of footage looking for a, for a a car. I mean, you don't know, and you don't know if it's gonna be there or not. It could be on video, could not be on video. We're not, in other words, we don't, we don't know where this car entered and exited. You'd have to look at several different entrances and entrances, exits and entrances to, to Wellington. And then look for hours and hours and hours trying to find the car that, that may have committed a crime. I, I just don't know. I'm not quite sure. I mean, you know, the so I'm kind of against this. I mean, lurking in the back of everyone's mind here is, is what happened, you know, we had a murder and we had a kidnapping. A couple of years ago, the last year, the year before. And, you know, we're all worried about that. So I thought about it a lot, but I can't see why, how this would have helped. I don't think it would have prevented the tragedy and I don't think it would have warned the residents that there was an imminent danger and I don't think I don't know, I mean, I, I can't see where it would help capture the guy either. So, no, I don't know. I'm kind of opposed to this. Thank you.
Well, you have Peter Tanaka, Ralph Tulis, and then Newland. And then Michelle and then Ralph. And I do have to say, it's nine o'clock. We had said that we would end at nine. I don't know. It's our last item, so. I don't know, I guess I could ask everyone's opinion. Would you rather stay a little bit? Finish or we can be on Thursday?
Maybe finish this hour.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. All right, sounds like that's so, yeah, so we're, so we're, we're just gonna ask everyone to keep your comments brief, okay? Ralph?
Peter.
Oh, yeah, I did say Peter. Sorry, thank you.
Peter Tanaka, one twenty-five Mason Road. I, I was, I'm coming at this from the I'm coming at it from the point of view that I was on the, I was part of the operation that started installing the cameras at UConn. And, and there are a lot of, of problems that I see here. One is archiving records, these are now public records available for Freedom of Information Act. Who's gonna be filling those out? Secondarily, this is primarily on state roads used by the state police for state investigations. This should probably be spearheaded by the state police. Uh, I know at UConn, the cameras on campus were originally installed to solve a murder. And, uh, they would have solved one, it solved it incredibly quickly had we had them at the time. But it was a, it was a police function, and that's why the police department was, was spearheading installing these. Also, with any technology, you're gonna have to upgrade that technology over time, which will be a continued expense. And, and as we've seen with, uh, all the technology in town, the support for that technology is, is not inexpensive. Uh, we just had to upgrade for the, uh, the, the, uh, town, uh, computer systems, and, and that's no different for this. I, I think that it, it would be a massive headache, both from the town standpoint of, of writing policy, uh, maintaining records, uh, Freedom of Information Act, and, and the utility for the cost is, is, I think would be small for the town, it would be great for the state police, and I think they should spearhead this through the state. Thank you.
Uh, Ralph?
Okay, um, let, let's clarify one thing right off the bat, I, this is, this is not traffic surve- uh, traffic cameras, this is surveillance cameras, let's be real. Um, who pays for the cost of maintenance? Who pays for the cost of data storage? This is not a college campus we're talking about, this is, this is a rural community, this is a, uh, uh, not an urban area at all. Uh, which direction do the cameras look at? Are they three hundred and six degree, uh, PTZ cameras? Um, which, if they're going to be of any value, would need to be monitored on, on a regular basis, you're not gonna record three hundred and sixty degrees around a camera, pan and zoom in and out, uh, automatically. Now, I know the technology exists for the camera to do that. It can follow a car, it can follow a person, I get that. But it is a surveillance camera, it's not a traffic camera. Um, the best benefit out of this is in crime solving, it's not in crime prevention, which is really a law enforcement matter, and I, I would go with, uh, Mr. Tanaka on his point of view. I, I don't think this is a good use of these funds, I think we have uh, other issues that are not going to get funded on our list, and that's where the money should go. And that's really all I think I have to say for now.
Michelle, what's next?
Uh, Michelle Christensen, Birch Meadow Lane. While I'm not really against cameras for some sort of use in town, I don't support such large funds to be used for this project, I know for myself that it would not make me feel any safer in town versus something like a resident trooper that would actually be more of a crime prevention. Um, road conditions seem like regardless of any condition, Public Works has to go out anyway, so I don't feel that there's any warrant there. Um, again, I'm just not in support of using such large amounts of funds for this project.
Yes, and now we're down. Um, I think if people have personal concerns about, you know, somebody's gonna steal my car or my catalytic converter, they might wanna get those, I'm not a techie, but one of those Ring cameras or whatever. When there's been a lot of crimes, they used them from, from houses and gotten views of the street and stuff when they have a timeframe, they're looking for it. We, I don't know what the current status is of the emergency services. Now, the day, we had a horrible, horrible horrible accident, incident in town. I found out about it at four o'clock in the afternoon, and the motorcycle was across the street from my house. I knew nothing about it until the afternoon. I think, I don't know if ARPA could be used for it to move forward our emergent, with some sort of emergency.
That's already in the works, that'll be rolling out soon.
Pardon me?
That's already in the works, it will be rolling out soon.
And is that, does that fall under, can, can ARPA fund this or is it?
Yeah, so it's not on this request, so I would say we should put the conversation to this, but it's, it's currently funded in our, in our budget. There's funding within our budget.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm hearing you say that, I'm just saying, this would not be in our budget. And, I mean, the ARPA funds are coming from our budget, so if we could get some benefit from the ARPA funds toward a goal we already had set, that might be preferable. Okay.
Phil?
Just call Troy.
The line, Birch Meadow Lane, I think the funds for this would be better coming from Homeland Security or a state grant, uh, because that's what those two organizations are designed for, whether it's a small town grant or something like that, I don't think this is our points.
Uh, Matt already said something, so I'm just gonna let Tom ask, uh, for that.
Who's that, me?
Uh, Tom said.
Okay. Hi again, um, so the question, I, I guess would be for either Erica or Mike. Is there a, would, would you have a scaled down version of this proposal at all? Like a prototype, something that we could try, not, not jump in the water all at once? Uh, or something that we could see if we like the system or not, is that feasible, does that? What do you think?
So, I, I'll speak to this from the Board of Selectmen standpoint, there was, um, a little bit of a split decision, and, and I tend to be the, the, um, deciding factor, and it was not in the board approving this, it was simply approving that this move to ARPA so that there could be a public hearing, so we could go back and have discussions, but the board wanted to, to get a lot of public input on this, because we, you know, I have lots of questions and some concerns about it, although this is a, a system that is in place in many areas, many of those areas either have um, a large population need, i.e. UConn, their own law enforcement, we, we don't have those things here, so how it would be best utilized and served in our community are still some questions I have, and I wanted input from, from stakeholders here on that, so that scaled down conversation could go back to the Board of Selectmen? Um, absolutely, I don't think that's, uh, out of the realm of possibility. But we, we did not say we, this is a project we want to move forward with, it was, we have lots of questions we want to have answered, in the meantime, let's have a public discussion.
So, so Mi- Mike is, if you don't mind me going to Mike here, Erica, I, does does that, as, as the idea guy on this, does that make any sense to you at all?
Absolutely, my whole intent was to try to get it to see if I think the, I, I think the idea has a lot of merit, but it's not my money, and I'm not getting anything from it, so I wanted to get it out in front of people for discussion, if the townspeople in general are not interested in this idea, that's really important information. So, I'll make the benefit, especially if, you know, certain situations in town. But then, yeah, if, if people aren't interested, or they wanna fund a smaller portion, there's a lot of discussion about the area around the truck stops, what's going on at the truck stop, so maybe, maybe someone thinks that's a better idea, we focus just the on-off ramps and on-the-truck ones.
What I'm getting at is, we have to make a decision on this, one way or another, and, and I'm just trying to ask if there's any possibility of a scaled down, not the whole enchilada, but, you know, something for us to get, dip our foot in, and see if it's something that we, we like, and it works like we think it works, and, and all that, rather, you know what I'm saying?
So, Tom, the only, the only qualifier I would say is you can't get too small because you have the upfront cost of getting into the software. So, you wouldn't wanna do it for one camera. You know, you'd wanna do at least a few cameras so you can actually see if there's any benefit, and the software cost doesn't go up at all for more cameras, the IT cost, the internet costs, mate. But the software cost doesn't go up for more cameras necessarily, it's, it's getting the program onto the software.
Okay, and so fair is fair, uh, you were pretty rough on Troy with CIP, the reason this isn't in CIP is because?
Uh, because I, I, I brought it to Erica two budget seasons in a row, and she felt that it was not a priority at the time to move it forward, which I respect. I'm just saying, I, I came to her and met with her with this proposal with lower prices, and I've increased the prices over the years, I keep bringing it back.
Sure, no, and, and rough is not the right characterization, uh, but just because that was raised, I just wanted to ask that, that's all, thanks.
Uh, so Matt had his hand raised, that's Stephanie.
So, uh, this, Mike, how, how long would these things last? You asked about the, the purveyors of this, how long cameras will last?
If they're, the, the cameras that I expect are pretty high quality, they're, um, they're very durable, they have their own heat so that they don't get cloudy lenses, they don't jam in the winter, all that stuff, they're, they're well proven, um, kinda standard of the higher quality part of the industry. And, um, that's, that's why they're a few thousand dollars each. Um, but they're very good cameras, and they typically, if they're not impacted, if they're not, you know, smashed off a pole, um, they typically last five to seven years without any repairs, um, and then it's a little dicey once you get past that point. Um, particularly the pantill zoom ones, because they have motors inside that move around. Um, most of them, I did not propose pantill zoom, I proposed wide area coverage. So the only motor inside it is the focusing capability, and they're a lot more trouble free, so, so years and years you would get a hole.
So, I, yeah, I, I, I thought ten years, so, using straight line depreciation, that's twenty thousand dollars a year. At the end of ten years, you're gonna have to replace these things, now, I guess, we're saying it's five or six or seven years.
I'm saying they're completely reliable, five to seven years.
I, I understand. So, uh, and then the scaled down thing, I mean, so what Mike is saying is those the real costs are in the, the maintenance, the data storage, the, um, the, the software and stuff like that, and, and spreading that over fewer cameras, you're getting diminishing returns if you, if you reduce the number of cameras now. I think that's what you're saying, Mike, right?
Yes.
That's it, thank you.
Stephanie.
Mike and I have talked about this, Steph Summers, uh, Y Road, but, um, I'm, I'm pretty against the idea conceptually, because I think it, I think we're a town of fifty-five hundred, we're not talking about a lot of major cat, crime here. Yes, we had a horrific incident, but, you know, we had not in our history pretty much before then with a private citizen, and it's like, I think it, I think it messes with the small town gestalt. I don't think people live in Wellington, because they wanna be on camera all the time, I just don't. And I, and I really have questions about the folks using it and how it's used, because there's news stories all the time about cops doing background checks on someone that is not a suspect. You know, I just, uh, and, and the other point I would make is, the crimes we're talking about that are more, you know, uh, that have been plaguing us somewhat, are minor crimes, I mean, they're, there are thefts of radios from cars or loose change in cars, they're not major crime um, incidents, so, I'm not saying it would never be, uh, used, I like, uh, the comments that people were raising about this being a police investigation issue, Peter raised that, I thought that was, you know, I think his comments were really strong, um, but my, my issue is more, I, I just think it messes with, with a, a small town feel. Um, and I personally like it, I've lived in all big cities before I came here, so thanks.
Arthur? Oh, actually, uh, I, I forgot.
Um, couple of questions I've got. My experience, I, I've got forty-eight years in IT, and I've worked with this stuff a lot, and, um, if anybody, it's wireless, somebody's gonna hack into it. I don't know what they've got, I don't know what they have for security software. But no matter what you've got, it can be hacked into, number one.
And it's wired.
It's wired?
It's all IP and it's incredibly complicated software. They're, they're, they're like worldwide companies that do the software.
Doesn't matter, you can still hack.
Hang on.
The other thing is, you can buy, you can buy wide angle cameras, like Simply Safe sells them, and a lot of them for a hundred and fifty dollars, do the math. You could, you could take and give out a camera to every resident in town to put on their house, the same way you did masks. And still come out ahead. As you'd be wealthy, because if you do the math, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, what are you talking about, five thousand cameras? We don't have five thousand houses in town.
Uh, Arthur?
Hi, Arthur Christensen, fourteen Birch Meadow Lane, um, I just, I have a question and, uh, a comment as well. Someone mentioned monitoring cars and civilians entering and exiting the town, are we talking cameras with a high enough resolution to do facial recognition?
No, I, I think my comment was that, um, and I, I like to speak, so it, it could only see, so they would only be located um, I get, again, based on this proposal, on areas, um, bordering the town, so they wouldn't be inside the town. Mike, do they, um, do, like, do they use a special kind of camera to be able to record license plates?
There is a proposal, there is the option to do license plate cameras or standard area cameras. Um, and the license plate camera is unique, it only records the license plate. So like, when you're going through UConn, you'll notice two cameras on a pole. One looks like a big cigar box, that's the license plate.
Okay, what is this proposal covering, just, just a generic camera or the license plate camera?
It's got options for both, and the full price proposal would be license plate cameras at a couple of key places, like the highway off-ranch by the truck stops.
Okay, so just, I, just trying to understand how this would help solve a crime when if you're not going to go with the license plate cameras, if you happen to be lucky enough to catch a generic Toyota, gray Toyota that you think might have stolen something, I'm not sure how, I, I don't think the amount of crimes this could possibly solve even comes close to justifying the cost of this, especially now that we're talking this, this, this is just a one-time cost, you're talking maybe a decade down the road, you've got to replace a lot of things on these cameras. And the other comment that I wanted to make, was something that was already said, actually, just by the, the earlier gentleman, um, and, you know, even if the cameras are wired, if you're talking storage, they're stored on a server. And, yeah, I don't know if you've noticed, but servers everywhere can be broken into, so if you're storing data, if you're storing videos, someone can grab them, someone can get in there and someone can grab them, and that's just, it's, it's a risk I just wanted brought up for everybody, thank you.
I think that's a valuable point, uh, this would be, I believe, cloud.
It would be, it would be on the software company's server, which is the same server that's doing the state police and everything else.
But at the end of the day, I think we all recognize that just about anything can be hacked.
If you can lie, you can all lie.
That's right.
But, oh, oh, yeah, Doc.
For thirty-four Red Oakville, I just wanna say, I, I don't support the proposal. I think there's a whole lot, there's a whole bunch more projects on the list that would like to be covered, including Skits here, and, uh, probably more use of the Skits here to do without the cameras.
Uh, Elaine?
Yeah, just, I forgot to say, it's the, um, the, the thing to me is, the, the recording is a looking back at what happened. Whereas the emergency thing, is people can spring it, and a kid is lost, you know? We get people looking for the kid right way. Not wait and look on the cameras, sometimes see if they crossed that path, that's, that's all GFC.
Uh, did, did Ron? Well, Ron, did you still wanna talk? Ron, you said, but, so you had a hand up before, but not sure if you still wanted to say something.
Can you hear it?
I don't, um, yeah.
Awesome.
Oh. Good, okay, well, Mike?
Just, just one quick comment, uh, that was brought up before. Um, I appreciate the comments about this is the state's problem. I get that, it's a state police thing, it's state highways. This isn't the state's problem, this is our problem, that, that I think this is an idea to solve, because it's about solving quality life problems in our community. It happens to be that the state police are the people who do it, if we had our own police force, that what they are solving or the goal is not any different. So, it's state roads, it's state police, but it's our community. I wouldn't propose buying these cameras to be on Interstate eighty-four so that DOT can monitor traffic. That's not a quality life benefit for it. That was the only thing I wanted to add.
Uh, yeah, Jason, did you?
Yeah, Jason, we had to, how to find the road. You're saying that it's very limited, it's moving, accessing this information. You had the same record, you said there's an app, so we're gonna state out to them. Mr. Sazal, can I access this, who has, on his phone? To check the weather, I could get all the roads. How is that?
How is that secure?
There, there is a very, I, I work with these installed, worked with the software for people who install on our phone. There's a very lengthy credentialing process that you go through to get the app. The app is installed by a technician, it can't be shared with anybody else, like there, it can't be cloned onto another phone, and there are all sorts of very high-level requests involved. And, uh, you cannot, you don't even have your own, if you have it on your phone, you don't even have the passwords to be able to do anything with it other than your access password. Um, and for example, like, if Troy had it on his phone as a public works function, he would not be able to look at recordings today. He would only be able to look at live, which, keep in mind, is in the public domain. Any one of us could stand at that same location, the cameras, and see what's happening.
Well, he'll be able to see the roads.
Right.
State roads.
Just like you can when you're standing there driving in your car. It's just a public space.
Look at state roads. He doesn't care about state roads, he cares about town.
Yes, about road condition. That, that's not the big stuff.
All right, um.
You have mentioned needs and wants, and this definitely seems like a lot.
Well, it doesn't do me any, but I just thought it would improve quality life, and that's why I'm on the phone. I get absolutely nothing.
Okay, so Ron, so Ron is back, Ron is here.
Hi. Ron? Yeah, hi, hello again. Has the crime rate gone up in the last year or so?
Has the crime, has the crime rate gone up?
Yeah, has it gone up, like, a lot of incidents where these cameras would be necessary?
I, I don't know over the last few years. Certainly, there's a lot more discussion about what's going on, and actually, it's been a little quiet the last few months.
Yeah.
North end of town stuff.
So I, I'll give you a little perspective. We get a monthly report from Troop C, and I would say, um, it's pretty average, that I wouldn't say there's an increase. Certainly, um, in 2020, we had a major incident that has put things on the forefront of our residents' mind and their safety. And I think that a lot is where this request from, from Mike came from. But I wouldn't say, um, we've had a lot more. A lot of the incidents we see from Troop C are generated, uh, the highway.
I thought so. Thank you.
But every crime is important as well.
Yeah.
So Matt, and then Ed.
So where would the monitors be placed?
They would be placed on, on, on poles, utility poles.
No, 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 that's, that's the cameras. So where would the monitors be placed?
No idea, Matt. We haven't even thought that far ahead, I can honestly tell you. Don't have an honest answer. Um, I, I, again, we don't have anyone to be monitoring them regularly. And if this was cloud-based storage, my initial thought, and again, this is something, all things that have to be worked out, is, is that they would be accessed probably web-based.
It's all web-based, it's all IP.
So it would be web-based, and we wouldn't necessarily need a server, but the, like we have for some of the cameras we have here in town.
Right, so, uh, what, my, would this, would this be at the fire department? Would the fire department have monitors that they're looking at, at these, these place, all the different cameras?
It would be web-based, it would only be accessed if needed. And there's also, um, one of the things Mike has shared with us is that there is access to who's accessing, how frequently they access. So the access to start would be limited in who had it. My assumption, based on the request, would probably be our Public Works, um, my office, each of our fire departments, um, and then I'm not sure beyond that, the scope, um, potentially state police. Again, those are all details that would have to be worked out. This is not.
That's typical.
Yeah, I would say this is, um, well, this is a project that's important, we get feedback from. It's not a shovel-ready project where we have all those answers for you.
Yeah, I, I, I'm still opposed, as I was at the beginning. I mean, I think, I don't see how this solves crimes. And people could, you know, you can't monitor those roads to prevent anything, so it's all getting someone after they commit a crime. And I don't see how this helps do that, especially if you're not getting the, you're not covering all the entrances and exits from, from Wellington, just some of them. And you're, 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 I don't see, on any petty crimes where the state police would look at hours and hours and hours and hours of video to try and find somebody's, you know, license plate. I, I just don't see it working. I don't, I don't, I don't see how it would be beneficial. So, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I gotta say is, how many, question, how many, how many roads do we have coming into town that aren't state roads? And anybody that's gonna create a, is gonna pull off a pine, is gonna know where the cameras are, and they're gonna use those roads to get in and around town. Unless you put a camera on every road coming into town, there's no way you're gonna catch fake cats. Fake cameras on poles, really cheap.
Well, I think this one is pretty easy for the ARPA Commission. The, the, it's almost universal opposition by townspeople. So I think that's the value of this process, right? We're taking feedback. The townspeople who are talking here don't seem to like the proposal, so, I don't know, I think that kinda, I think that kinda says where it should go. And if there's a new move for public safety in the future, or a, a public safety person who feels there's a need, or that townspeople want in the future, we revisit this from some other funding thing. There's, as I said, there's no, there's no investment for me, there's no gain for me for this to go through, other than I've used the tool, I think it'll work. But if the townspeople don't want it, then I think, I think that's why we're here.
Uh, Matt?
Just a comment on, on, you know, piggybacking on what Mike said about the, the process. What this process didn't do is, is it didn't identify some of the needs that, that, that I think are important to people. So, I mean, I brought up the, the ADA for the, uh, for the, um, Historical Society. I, I think there's other ones also. I think the, the electric, the, uh, broadband access for our rural community here in Wellington is very important. It was one of the things.
So Matt, Matt, I'm gonna just say to that is, we, we need to have a champion for any of those projects. Someone has to come to some board and make that pitch, just as Mike has done to the Board of Selectmen. Someone could do, easily do that, and we're not done yet, right? So, um, we're not done yet, is, is all I can say. So. Peter?
Yeah, I, I think this meeting's gone long, long enough. But how long, let me, uh, from, from a camera point of view, Matt was saying about viewing hours and hours of video. Generally, the police have an idea of a timeframe, so it, and a direction of travel. So I know the one case we worked, we would have had to look through almost 10 minutes of information, we would have found it. The other thing is the leaving town, uh, I think that gives criminals, uh, uh, credit for a degree of smartness, which is generally not found. But I, I, I still don't think that this is a project which is in the preview of the town. I believe this is a, a, a police function, and, and that they should be spearheading this, not the town. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Uh, Jim Bullock, Laurel Drive. I, I found this, uh, public hearing, uh, very informative. Uh, I wanna thank everybody, the ARPA Commission, for, for bringing it and holding it, uh, in evening hours when we all could attend. And I strongly would urge you to hold your meetings, uh, later in the evening, as all other public meetings are held, so the public can participate. Uh, I think, uh, the more inputs you get to some of these type of questions, the, the better information and better informed decisions you can make. And it also helps, uh, bring, uh, public buy-in on the entire process. So, uh, I would encourage you to move your meetings to sometime where the, the public could attend, to perhaps, uh, after 5:30 in the, at the end of the day. Thank you.
Anything else about cameras? Anyone else have any more comments about cameras? Sarah Reese?
Sarah Reese, Pine Crest Road. I just want to thank you guys for holding this meeting and having this open dialogue. I think it's extremely important for community and insightful, so thank you.
I think there are no more comments about the cameras. I think that we're gonna, we're, we're gonna skip over the possible actions to our next regular meeting, which is on Mon- Monday, we're from today. I don't, I'm guessing there's no presence to speak about anything that was not on the agenda? Can I just?
I apologize for dragging this meeting along, but I'd like to thank Stephanie for making me look up the word gestalt.
So why will, why will we? Uh, Ralph, did you have something else?
Yeah, just a final comment. I, I'm assuming this is present to speak for something that's not on the agenda. I, I will reiterate my concern about hybrid meetings and the audio quality of the people in the room. Uh, about 50% of the speakers, uh, who were talking to everyone at the table might have been heard well by the people at the table, but they sure as heck weren't heard well by some of us in the audience. I, I think 100% Zoom or 100% in-person is much better. Uh, and I'll, I'll continue to harp on that topic. Thank you.
I was gonna suggest, I don't, I don't know everybody, and there's no identification. There was no introductions at the beginning. I just suggest, kind of be specific with the name, whatever.
Okay, um, is, so yes, and the next, our next regular meeting is on Wednesday, the 18th. We are, regular meetings are scheduled for the first and the third Mondays. The last couple of months, it's gotten all messed up because of holidays, but we're, we're also scheduled for the 18th. And that's where we'll start possibly making some motions about funding some of these, or not funding, funding some fees, or partially funding some of these. Or potentially, uh, well, we're not gonna be hearing any new ones until we go through this list, but we may be closing some as well. And Donna may be able to tell us if, um, some of this spending has gone down on some of these other projects. There are funds that are, that can be available to use for something else. So if someone saved $5,000, it'll be a $5,000 more to add to another project. So, um, Monday we'll have a lot more information on that, and be able to start making some decisions. At 1:30. Oh, yeah, that, that, those are regular meetings.
The 18th, so it's the 18th at 1:30?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for hanging in there with us.